Rick did the electronic.
I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, June 6th. And we will be going into closed session.
We have four closed session items. We have existing litigation, Long Beach Unified versus the County of Los Angeles. Avalon's a party to that case. And we have three conference with real property negotiators. First, the field dog land lease with the Cavanagh Island Company. The city mechanic garage, also Cavanagh Island Company. And lastly, certain land adjacent to the Public Works warehouse.
Microphone.
Three closed sessions about property. One, existing litigation. They're all on here. We can go in now.
Any rule?
Nope. She just said go straight to.
They had a need to know there?
Well, that's what it says right there.
We'll do it again.
Well, may we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here. We'll save the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation for later. And we're back from closed session.
There was no reportable action on the closed sessions on items number two, three, and four in closed session. Councilmembers Hernandez and McGugan. Cassidy recused themselves due to income from the island company. We're also going to go into closed session on item number five at the end of the agenda. Public employee performance evaluation, city manager, as well as conference with labor negotiators on the city manager.
Where's Hungry?
He was here earlier.
Did he do the?
And we're live. We did open the meeting, the Avalon City Council meeting, at 5:00 today. And we just returned from closed session. So, council?
And there were no reportable actions on any of the closed sessions, except for actually, on closed session item number one, the council did vote by 3-0, by 5-0 vote to authorize a settlement to proceed in the Long Beach Unified case. We have to report that out.
And now if we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would please stand for a moment. We'd like to take a moment to remember Kathy Sweeney, who passed away recently. She's a wonderful wife, mother, sister, grandmother, and a good friend to many of us. She will be dearly missed. Please be seated. Okay. We're going to try to take a couple of things out of order. One of them was the audit, which was item 10 on the consent calendar. The City of Avalon audited financial statements for 1516. The gentleman needs to catch a boat. Do you want to, would you like to step up to the podium, the two of you? For whomever?
We're ready for the audited financial statement?
Yes.
The City of Avalon has its audited financial results as of the end of June 30th, 2016. And Terry Kuhn from Davis Farr is here to discuss the results with you. So, please welcome Terry. He's the audit manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Marshall and city council members, city clerk, city manager, and city attorney. As Bob mentioned, my name is Terry Kuhn. I'm an audit supervisor at Davis Farr, the city's independent outside CPA firm. And I am here to present the audit results for the city's financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2016. The basic financial statements were finalized as of June 30th, 2016, and issued. We issued the following reports. The basic financial statements, the auditor's letter to those in governance, and as well as the internal control recommendation letter. We issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements dated May 18th, 2017. An unmodified opinion essentially means clean opinion. During this year's audit, I'm not sure if you're familiar with last year's audit, when with the big Gatsby 68 implementation of the net pension liability. This year was a little calmer. However, there was a new Gatsby pronouncement that was implemented during the year, and it was Gatsby 72. And essentially, what Gatsby 72 does, it changed the way certain investments are reported in the notes to the financial statements. Certain assets and liabilities are required to be reported at fair value per Gatsby 72. And the standard provides a fair value framework, let me get to that slide, that provides a hierarchy that prioritizes inputs to valuation techniques used to measure fair value. In other words, it takes all of an entity's investments, the city's investments, and it categorizes them by fair value hierarchy level. And basically, one is the lowest number of inputs that are needed to determine the fair value of an asset. And three is, it gets more difficult to readily determine the fair value. As of June 30th, 2016, the city's investments, certificates, deposits fell into the category As included in your packet, we also issued an internal control letter of recommendations. And I'll just briefly go through what those, just a brief outline of what is included in that letter. The first one, audit adjustments were detected during the audit. There were certain, I have to remember to, how about I just do that? Okay. There are certain credit card transactions tested that did not include receipts or other supporting documentation, as well as other credit card transactions where there was a missing clear and appropriate expense account designation. And the credit card testing was tested against what we consider to be industry best practices. Also included, we tested several travel and expense reimbursements, and certain transactions did not include a clearly documented business purpose within the supporting documentation. Certain reimbursements did not contain documentation of review and approval by the finance director and city manager in accordance with the city's travel and expense reimbursement policy. Certain, and then also certain normal, regular cash aspersments did not have evidence of informal quotes obtained before purchase in accordance with the city's municipal code. And then lastly, certain internal controls previously performed by the finance director had not been performed, or had not been performed timely during the year. I don't know if the audience can see this, but I'll try my best to explain this. Just a financial statement highlights. As of June 30th, 2016, total assets of the city were $51.9 million, which represented an increase of $2.3 million from the prior year of total assets. The biggest increases to note were in cash and investments, as well as capital assets due to significant projects that were started and in progress as of June 30th. Also regarding the balance sheet, liabilities also increased 14.4, or they increased to $14.4 million, which is a 406,000 increase. And the biggest components of the increase were addition to compensated absences, the OPEB liability, and of course, the net pension liability, the reason that caused the increase in liabilities overall. Getting down to the bottom line, overall equity increased by $2.8 million in the current year on the full accrual basis of accounting, and this is inclusive of all the city's funds. Specifically for the general fund, general fund revenues for the year as of June 30th, 2016 totaled $12.3 million, and were $2.5 million higher than the prior year. The biggest increase was due to an increase in intergovernmental revenues, federal grants, which increased by $955,000 from the prior year, and was almost $1 million higher than budgeted. Other revenues increased by $1.2 million due to insurance claim reimbursements, as well as a $500,000 contribution from the Anheuser-Busch Corporation that was recognized in fiscal year 16, but actually related to the fiscal year 15, but recognized in fiscal year 16 due to the timing in which the receipt was, the cash was actually received. Moving on to general fund expenses, general fund expenses totaled approximately $10.5 million, which was $1.63 million higher than the prior year, mainly due to an increase in capital expenditures, capital projects during the year. Expenditures in total for the general fund exceeded the budget by $155,000, just pretty comparable to the prior year. Overall, getting down to the bottom line for the general fund, equity increased 1.6 million, and the ending equity as of June 30th, 2016 is up to $7.3 million. And that is the end of my presentation of the city's financial statements. Are there any questions at this time?
Council?
I just have a quick question regarding the credit card receipts.
Yes.
That was noted on there. That has been reconciled, hasn't it?
Yeah, I'll allow Bob to.
Yes, all of the internal control recommendations from Davis Farr, the city manager and I have been working together to make sure that those will not be issues going forward. And some of the credit card receipts that were missing were located later after the audit was complete.
Okay.
We're also, Mayor, taking a hard look at the city's current purchasing policy. That was a task that we had started in the last year. We want to be sure that the code and what we do, that we are doing what the code says we're to do. But having said that, the code needs to be revamped, and it needs to be revised, and we need to bring that to you so that you can, we can get your input on that. Because some purchase orders for $100 for something that's in the budget is, to have a delay in approvals of that, we don't think is prudent or wise. But we will be bringing those recommendations, and we appreciate very much the help of the auditors in identifying some issues where the finance director and I are strengthening the function.
Other council, comments? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, is there?
Oh, sorry.
I'll make a motion to receive and approve the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016, and accompanying reports comprised of the city's financial audit.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No further comment? Call for the vote.
Four ayes and one no. Councilmember Cassidy? Nope.
Made the motion.
There we go. It would be odd when, well, I'm messing with this, so I probably hit the button. Sorry.
Okay, now we will go back to the regular flow of events. Announcements and written communications?
I received one letter of written communications from Island Enterprises, and it's in connection, I believe, with item number 12 on the consent calendar.
Any other?
And all the council received that letter also.
Yes, thank you. City manager report.
Mayor, I have just a few things to mention. One, I will be attending the League of California Cities Policy Committee on Housing, Community, and Economic Development in Sacramento on the 8th of this month. I did want to mention also, as was mentioned in the management update, that we, in staff, public works director and I, met with the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. It was a very, very good meeting conversation about really doing a comprehensive water management plan for the entire island, looking at the issues that, where there might be gaps in information. And I was, we were honored to have them recognize our work and leadership in asking us to head that. We also, Mayor Protem Olson and myself and Director of Public Works and Planning, we met with Coastal Commission staff, very engaging, very positive on important capital improvement projects that you have directed that we pursue. And we received advice on those projects and how we can make sure that we can achieve your goals and comply with Coastal Act regulations. Thank you.
Okay. The council report.
I have a big city attorney report.
Well, aren't you our legal counsel?
Oh, you mean council report isn't your counsel. Okay. So, as everyone knows, in November, voters passed and legalized marijuana in recreational use of marijuana in California. And in that provision, they said that individuals can cultivate certain amounts of their own marijuana. And it also provided that cities can ban marijuana dispensaries in their cities, or they can also tax it. And so, when Councilmember Olson and I attended the League of, I mean, the Contract Cities, there were several presentations about marijuana and what cities can do. You have the option of either just saying, you know, here's how we're going to regulate cultivation, and we're not going to allow any sales, or you can regulate sales, you can tax it. Marijuana will become legal for recreational use at the later of January 1st, 2018, or when the state finishes its regulations. And so, what I would like direction of is, I think it'd be appropriate for the community to have a study session and give direction about what the council wants to do with this, the pros and cons. And then from that workshop, so to say, you give us direction, and we'll do, again, whatever the council's direction is. We can put on the workshop ourselves. We've done it for several cities. Or HDL, who is working with the city already under contract, they can do it for 2,500 bucks. So, you know, whatever you want, we can do it, or you can have an outside contractor do it. It'd be about a three-hour session. We do it, it's going to be significantly less expensive.
Shouldn't we kind of already do that?
That only dealt with cultivation, and since then, there's entirely new rules about what cities can do and cannot do under this new regime, and there's examples. And I know Captain Hoskins was there at the same presentation as I, and it was great information. And we think it's appropriate for the council to have this, so that you can make the decision that you think is best for the community. So, it's just a matter of, we can do it as a regular, as part of a regular council meeting, or you could have a study session. I'd like to have it completed and get direction by August, so we can have the ordinance, whatever ordinance is going to be in place in November, so that we're ready to go if that's the date. So, we're just seeking direction as to when you'd like to do this, how you'd like to do this, and then we'll go forward.
So, let me just ask you a question. So, if we wanted to continue with the no dispensaries, because that's already on the book, we could keep that intact, or we would have to do that again?
Okay, what you currently ban right now is medical marijuana dispensaries. And so, what we would be recommending is that if you wanted to ban marijuana, that you proactively enact the ban, so that it's specific. There's some language in the passing legislation that says that if cities want to ban it, you should act affirmatively and do so, rather than just say that it's against federal law. So, that's what we're recommending our cities do, either you take an action one way or the other.
Okay, but how is the federal issue answered about getting any cannabis on the island?
We've looked at that, and that is still an issue under, because there's a gap there in the channel that's under federal territory. That, so that would prohibit, under federal law, the transportation. The issue is, though, is that if people get it here, it's here. Once it's here, it's here. And we have to have, you are allowed to have, you have to have some rules on cultivation in terms of individuals under this legislation are allowed to personally cultivate marijuana for their own use. And the question is, does the city want to regulate how that's done? In other words, given the water required, where is the cultivation going to be? What type of codes are you going to have for the size of the plants, the electricity used, et cetera, et cetera?
Annulation, yeah, electric code.
So, even with the Coast Guard issue, we've looked at this, and we still have to do something. And so, we'd recommend, you know, doing it, because that also may change with the various administrations.
And again, so we go working on this in August, so we can start doing something, but when are those regulations going to come out to give us a little more?
Medical marijuana is actually being, the regulations are already in place. I've spoken with the people at the state, the medical side. What I was told by the people in the medical and the Department of whatever it was in the state of California, is that there aren't yet, there's no regulations, but that they expect it in January, what the city attorney said. They expect in January that regulations will come out with regard to, well, no, what the answer was, they have had no regulations come out.
It is, the state is developing a licensing scheme for people that want to sell recreational marijuana. What you have to, in order to do that, you have to get a permit from the state.
Right.
And the state's working on that. And so, what they've said is, until that process is done, you cannot sell marijuana. Once that is done, then you're allowed to sell it under state law, but cities retain the right to ban it if you want to.
So, we can still move even without?
Right, because that's going to be, it's going to, you know, if you want to get your state license, this is what you have to do. So, again, we're just saying, I know it was somewhat contentious last time, but, you know, state law says that you've got to make this choice, and so we'd like to.
Do it again.
You haven't identified delivery systems for medical marijuana? Delivery. In other words, whether or not we have, we allow it here one way or another?
You ban it right now.
So, we're banned right now?
Yes, you currently ban it right now. You ban the sale of medical marijuana in the city.
What if the sale is transacted on the mainland?
Yeah, because?
You don't have any, your regulations ban the selling of medical marijuana on the island.
Okay.
Could we have a, start the August 1st meeting a little early and have our study session at that time?
Up to three-hour study session, then a full meeting?
No, not, no. How much can you do it in?
We can do it in, I think, an hour.
Okay.
Oh.
So, if we start at 5:00, and then we go to the regular meeting at 6:00?
And then public comment?
Then, well, yeah, I mean, that's the thing.
We can talk about this in an hour?
Well, the presentation will be an hour, and then you're going to have public input. So?
We have to make some kind of decisions, right, about?
You have to give, I would like to have an ordinance in place January 1st.
Okay, so?
So, that means, that means I need to get direction. Either, I mean, if you want to ban it, it's very simple. That's like a one-sentence ordinance, you know? But I don't know what the answer will be, so that's why we want to study this and give you the options and give you examples of what some other cities have done, and what happens if cities don't regulate it versus what cities that do.
It's probably going to be more than an hour then, if there's a study session, comment period, and a decision-making process. It's going to be more than an hour.
Yes.
Two hours. So, we'd have to start at 4:00.
Well, could we just, okay, could we have the, could we have the initial education for an hour, one time, August, first in August? And then the middle of August, the next one, have maybe that other discussion with the group? Then we go, okay, provide direction for the writing of it. Then it comes in September.
Yeah, that's fine.
And we're way ahead of the ballgame at that point.
Right, yes, you are.
So, if, okay.
So, we'll shoot for an hour study session in August with another follow-up session in the second meeting in August, and we would make certain that the public understands that there'll be this presentation, so that they can hear.
Yeah, they come to the education, and then we, okay.
If I could, and you correct me if I'm incorrect, my understanding in talking to the state that you, that there's courses of action. One course is that you regulate it in some way or ban it. The others is, if you do nothing, then, as the city attorney said in January, that the state can license it, and it would be legal in any city that is, does not have regulations that prohibit that.
Yeah, good, thank you. Good.
Yes, we have direction. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember report. Who would like to start?
I'll be quick. I'll be attending the Gateway Cities Council Government Meeting tomorrow night, and the transportation session has been canceled.
Councilmember Sampson?
I just have a question for city attorney. What do you know about what's going on with the freight lines now, and how the Public Utilities Commission is moving forward with that, as far as competition versus monopoly?
They have granted a motion to reconsider, and so they'll be taking legal papers and submitting legal arguments, and it'll be a new trial, basically.
Okay, since we're a party, correct? We're a party in that process, correct?
Yeah, we are a party.
The City of Avalon?
Yes.
Okay. So, is it possible for us to move forward in some way as well?
We have to give direction, yeah.
Sure.
We can put that on the agenda for the direction, if you want to.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Okay.
That's really all I have for right now. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
I too will be attending the League of California Cities Conference, or Policy Meetings in Sacramento, on the Revenue and Taxation Committee, and on the Community Services Committee meeting back on the island on Saturday. Mr. Jenkins alluded to the meeting at Contract Cities, and Mr. Jenkins has alluded to the meeting with the PUC. I'm sorry. I think that's about all I have right now. We do have some kind of good news about the rocks on Middle Beach, that we can just help alleviate that issue.
Yes, we can remove this, those that are creating a safety hazard or blocking drainage.
By hand?
On the rocks. But what we can't, we have to get a permit in order to remove the rocks completely. If I said, for reasons that are not completely clear, but that's the rules, so we'll move expeditiously on handling the safety issue, and we will move to put the rocks back where they were before they moved. they were before, they moved over to where they are.
I don't understand that still, with the rocks. People over town, they move tons and tons of dirt when the tide gets high, it's no problem. We're talking about little rocks under our pier, and we've got to go to the Coastal Commission. What's the problem?
We thought it was a simple, we thought of all the issues that we raised to them, that that was the simplest.
You would think.
And it turned out that we do need a permit to do that. We even talked about excavating without going onto the beach, but excavating with an arm and pulling those rocks out. And the director was there, Mayor, if you wish to indulge.
Good evening. So, I think that the issue is, we'll be in the tidal zone, and we're operating a piece of equipment, so, you know, we have to protect the tidal zone. So, when we're up on top of the seawall, we're actually replenishing the sand, we're able to do that. But, once we get in that tidal zone, then, what the method we're going to use, right now that we discussed with the Coastal Commission, is we're actually going to do it by hand. Take the rocks out of that area, right below the stairway, right below the drainage, get rid of that by hand, and then we'll come back to them to discuss how we get mechanized equipment down in there to get the rest of the barack. And then, the sediment study, we should see the results of that come in about late July, and be presented to council, what we found out, why the sediment's moving there under the pier.
Will they also give us the recommendation, or they're just going to tell?
Yes, yes, they're going to give us recommendations on how to remediate.
Okay.
And bring it back to the way it was.
Yeah, we've been waiting for this for a couple of years now.
Yeah, there had to be some modeling done, and then we had to look at what's happening with the Catalina Express, the boats, and whether we're causing currents, so, all that's coming to you soon.
Wonderful.
Okay, on May 30th, I attended the older American Recognition Day with Judy Greer and Dan Hunky and Judy's husband. It was a wonderful event. It was great, and so, we're so glad Judy was there. And I also attended the Parent Institute for Quality Education. It was a celebration, graduation of parents who actively work with the school, starting at third grade, to help ensure that the success of their students, and it was, it was a very touching event, so, congratulations to the parents and the children that are working with the schools to make their children more of a success. And I just had a question about, would we be considering, oh, I don't know, would we be considering doing a ribbon cutting for the new restrooms and the new fuel dock? I guess I'm talking to myself. Oh, thank you, Bob.
Yes, I think we are considering that, just, we were waiting to get the floats installed, so we have the dingy dock, and then also the seasonal fuel floats to put in, so then we'd have the complete package.
Okay, and then we'll throw a barbecue out there, too, and have it make a fun?
Absolutely.
Okey-dokey, Dan. Okay, and that's all I have. Now, we have a presentation?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, we have just the opportunity to have a question-and-answer session with our consultant, Sean Corn from HDR. If you recall, HDR did a cost-of-service study and rate study earlier this year, and they presented, Sean came and presented on April 4th. Since then, we sent out public notices to all the parcel owners, and I am hoping to get input from either the city council or the public on the rate study today. This is not the public hearing. Public hearing will be the next city council meeting on June 20th. This is just an opportunity to have questions for Sean Corn, since tonight was the only night that he was available, and he won't be available next time, so I'll have to wing it if we have other questions.
Great, thank you.
So, I'd like to introduce Sean Corn, and he can answer any questions. And Sean, did you want me to just go to the last slide?
Actually, I'll jump to it here, thank you, Bob. Mayor, council members, thank you for having me here this evening. I'm just going to say a couple of quick things, just to summarize the rate study, and the first one is to talk about the purpose of the rate study, and really, there were a couple of key components to that. The first one was to look at the overall funding needs of each of the three utilities, water, saltwater, and, sorry, water, sewer, saltwater, and solid waste, and develop a plan to adequately fund the operating capital needs over the next five-year window. The second piece of that was to look at the rate structure, or how you charge your customers, to see if those are common approaches, if they reflect general industry standards. And then, the final piece was to come back and develop equitable and cost-based and legally defendable rates. And the big piece of that comes through the Proposition 218 requirements, where we have to show that proportional allocation of costs to the various customer classes. So, as we went through this process, and I'm going to skip to my final summary slide here, as we went through that, we developed a revenue requirement, which gave us our overall rate adjustment needs for each of the utilities. We then looked at the relationships and cost of service for the various customer types, based on those rate schedules, and then developed the rates based on that. So, the summary of the rate studies is that rate adjustments were necessary, or overall revenue adjustments were necessary for the sewer and the saltwater utilities. Solid waste rates were not projected to be increased until the final two years of the five-year plan that we proposed. We did go through and review the billing data, staff did, to determine if those were correct, and there were some adjustments made to the billing data to reflect appropriate categories, so whether you were a commercial sewer, or what your charge was, those were all looked at and refined through this process. As we did that, we also are proposing some changes to reflect the proportionality or the requirements of Proposition 218. And so, there are customer classes within sewer and saltwater that are being adjusted differently than the overall revenue adjustment. That's a one-time change in year one. In the future years of the four-year plan, of the five-year plan, the final four years, they would be adjusted by the overall proposed adjustment. So, this is a one-time realignment to cost-of-service results, so that everybody gets back to where they need to be, and then you can continue on going forward. We did modify, proposed modifying, some solid waste rates for the commercial-type customers, given some of the unique characteristics of those customers. We've proposed a rate based on square footage and trash generation assumptions as part of that. And then, we developed the overall proposed rates to meet those revenue needs, based on the overall changes in the customer types, the cleaning up of the billing data, and meeting the overall rate transition plan over the five-year period. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to you all, if you have any questions for me. I can flip back to prior slides that we had, or take any other comments that you may have.
I was just asking, Mayor Proten, yeah, we've already seen this, but basically, you just went back and tweaked it a little bit more, some of the things a little more.
No, nothing's changed in this since April 4th.
Oh, okay.
So, everything's the same.
Just to open it up to public comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay.
I don't have any questions?
I don't. Community, you have any questions?
And then, I also wanted to emphasize that, since we sent out the public notice, on the bottom of the public notice, it told people about the website that's available, and they can look up their data on the website by putting in their APN or their address, and get their rates. And they can do that for various years, so they can see how it compares from year to year for their specific parcel.
Has anybody contacted you yet, other than what happened after April 4th?
I had probably about three or four telephone calls, and I addressed each one of their specific questions, and I sent them an email to follow up, so that they would have that data for them.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, we're good. Do we need, we don't need to do anything?
Public comment?
Public comment. Okay, we've got, we've got one over here.
Rock Goslin, 318 Whitley. I was one of the comments, I think, that was referred to by Bob. I was actually looking at a lot of the data that was available online on the city's website, as to what people have been charged over the decades, how things were assigned and portioned, and I want to thank you and your firm for all the work that you did, but I still think that there's a lot more work to be done. There's a group of us that, as I talked with Bob on, that I think are going to be unfairly leaned upon for revenue, and others that have gotten away with, you know, not being charged. There was a class of charge within the original fee structures, the old fee structures are going to be replaced by this, one of which was for all commercial washer hookups. It was across the board. If Hotel A had a washer, they paid a fee, or at least they were supposed to. Some do, some don't. You know, Jim Amorosa's not here tonight to speak on, you know, what he's been paying. He's been charged for two commercial washers to be hooked up to his property for decades. And Hotel B, the Pavilion Lodge, has had two commercial washers hooked up to the sewer for 10 or 12 years, and have paid nothing. So, these fees, this particular class of fee goes away. Jim Amorosa was doing the right thing, and are we going to reimburse him? Probably not. Are we going to go back and charge other properties that haven't been paying this fee in the past and collect that money? I don't know, that's up to you guys. But, all I know is someone's reaching in my back pocket for about a 110% increase in the fees that I'm paying. And I want to compliment you on your, on your metrics, on assigning commercial laundries, besides a hotel, I own a commercial laundry plant here. For 26 years, I have been putting in very little cost structure onto the sewer collection fees, because I'm right next to the sewer treatment plant. I recycle my water. My water, before it enters the waste stream, is either filtered or decanted four times, and I don't wash industrial laundry. We don't have industry here, except for tourism. So, if you use your metrics like you're using and try and measure us against the real world, your metrics are softer, and probably, hopefully, you took into account that I don't wash wiping rags. But, at the same time, the now, the fee structure that I've been told about, and we discussed, takes away hotels needing to pay for having a commercial laundry machine on-site, or a restaurant for having a commercial machine on-site, and their tables, seats, or rooms, hotels, that, that fee structure is built in now. So, let's see, for 14 years, the Avalon Hotel's been sending all their laundry to a commercial laundry plant that recycles its water and has very little impact on the sewer treatment plant, because of what we do before we discharge. And now, the Avalon Hotel is going to pay a fee to the city per room, and on top of it, have to pay me to wash the stuff, which now, I'm going to have my fees increased. So, I understand that you're trying to make a model that works for everybody, and can be easily applied for, but I think that more work has to be done in looking at what's been charged in the past and what's being charged in the future. The Avalon Hotel provides this city almost $12,000 a year per room, and now, you're asking for more. And the laundry plant has been saving 1.5 million gallons of water per year by recycling, and just by virtue of the machinery we used to begin with, much less our recycling, and you're asking for more. Then, we go to Cottonwood Laundry, and Bill Rhodes couldn't be here today. He and I have had several discussions on the phone. It's almost prohibitively expensive for people to use him as it is. His machines are priced way, way higher per load than his operations are on the mainland. Why? Because the first six quarters that goes into one of those machines is just to pay for the water itself. Bill Rhodes is paying, as I'm paying, four cents a gallon for water, plus or minus, depending on the season. His operations on the mainland are probably paying four cents for 100 gallons. So, you know, and as we discussed, and I'll admit to it, that money's going to another entity. But, now, Bill Rhodes is going to have to tack on another quarter on the machines, and I can hear him right now, hopefully, he's able to watch this wherever he's at, he's probably going to go, no, I'm not going to pay for the machines, I'm going to yank them. And so, these are things that we've got to look at. The industry in this town is paying a lion's share of the utilities. On the mainland, it's the other way around. So, I think we need to look at that part, too.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? I guess the question is, when we get those kind of comments, what do we do? I mean, is there, I mean, when you can hear some rationale, or, come on, Sean.
So, one of the unique circumstances that you have is that you don't have the water information. So, as an example, a city with a water and sewer utility, you're able to match accounts to water consumption, and then you make estimates, similar to what we did here, of what that wastewater flow is going to be. And so, in this case, what we had to rely on, since we don't have any water information, is you look at industry standards for, as in this case, the amount of consumption per washing machine on a typical day. And so, that's what we base that allocation on. Same thing with the residential customer, we set that base, and then we compare that to all the other industry metrics to come up with a multiplier. So, I don't disagree, there are other, more work in the future, I think, to refine that, and Bob and I have talked about some of the things to look at, from a customer perspective, to make sure we have the right criteria in the system as part of that, as you go forward as well. On the rate side, we're trying to be as proportional as we possibly can with the information we have. And so, as you get more information, and there may, there typically will be exceptions to the rule, obviously, and then, the city manager, finance director, council would have to determine how to use that information if you were to adjust a rate for a customer.
Mayor, may I make a comment? I've been through a few of these over the years, and just as a standard, that no one segment of the community, whether it be residential, commercial, or industrial, should pay more than what their fair share is. And the opposite of that is, that none should pay less. So, whatever, whatever commercial or industrial cost is, and that seems to be what is the, and what I've heard Rock and others say, is there's a question about what they really, what their system is, and is it typical? We certainly could look at that, but, but I thought I heard, and I may have misheard, it's not for the residential sector to pick up a share that's other than its own share. So, that is, that is, the residential component should not be subsidizing any component, nor should the commercial or industrial sector be subsidizing. It all should be standing on its own merits.
Correct.
According to 218, Prop 218. And so, as data, Rock has raised some questions, as that data, then, maybe that's something we should take a hard look at, and then that would have to be evaluated, but that's, appreciate that information.
And I guess, then, the question is, we move forward, let's say we move forward and approve all the new rates, and then? all the new rates, and then, I mean, I don't think we want everybody in town, every commercial person in town, to come up and say, that's not fair. But I don't know how, and I know the finance director wouldn't want everybody in town to come knocking at his door, and how do we do this? But I, so I guess, I feel your pain, Rock. I just don't know how we move forward and how this city would do something to do that.
On the public notice, I did put my desk phone on there so people can call me.
Okay.
But I don't mind that. But what's being, what he was referring to is that on the commercial laundries, that the rate went up higher because when we compared our residential rate to laundries, there was, our laundries that were being, that is in the rate this year and in prior years was .68 of what a residence used for their, for their rate, for their sewer rate. Comparing that to the other indices, they range from 1.35 or 65, 1.35 to 2.20 times a residential rate. Nothing was less, the standard indices, nothing was less than the 1.35. So we selected the lowest rate of all of the, of all the standard indices, 1.35, but that happens to be twice as much as what laundries were being charged previously. And we think that that is a fair rate based on what we've looked at for the city and compared to the industry standards. So we think, we propose the rates because we believe them to be fair.
I mean, I'm not going to sit here and debate that Rock's laundry, I mean, that's not even, or even continue much with the dialogue, but if, you've got one system operation that really works uniquely compared to maybe another one that is just the regular old big old washing machine, I don't know if that's, but there's a difference there as well. I mean, if you're recycling and doing whatever, but I'm just a regular old laundromat, I'm, they would be using more water, I would assume. They're not as efficient as perhaps your laundry. So, but I know, I, well, anyway. Okay.
It would be useful if we had from our water purveyor, the amount of water that each, that each of these classes of users had, that would be very useful. And as was said, if it was a city water utility, that would be readily available. And in fact, in a city, that information is in fact public, because I know, because I've had in the past that records request, and I've asked attorneys in the past. So maybe there's something that the utility would feel comfortable doing that might help further evaluate this with data that they may be able to provide.
Yes, but then we also have the saltwater, which the city does provide, but we don't have meters, so we don't know what consumption is there either.
Yes, that's very good.
This is a unique city in several ways.
We're unique, and we don't weigh the trash.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Comments? Okay. All right, now we're moving on to item, where are we?
Now we're on oral communication.
We're not going anywhere. Okay, thank you. Okay, oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the council at this time. No action will be taken on any item not listed on the agenda, and you will be limited to three minutes.
Judy Greer, 355 Descanso Avenue, and I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of the Library to remind you all that we are having a used book sale on June 24th. This will be at the library from 10 to 2:00. And if you have books in your house that you would like to donate, you can take them to the library and leave them there anytime until then. The other thing is that our librarian, Morgan Pershing, has a book club. If you can see this. And it is a wonderful, wonderful book club. It is every fourth Tuesday of the month, 7:00 to 8:00, and the next book is called People of the Book. She has many books set aside for people, and it is a wonderful event once a month. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, welcome back, Chuck.
Good to be back. Chuck Martin, 352 Catalina. I'd like to bring up Pebley Beach again, to the left of the pier. It's been over three months that we, my wife wrote a letter asking to have the rocks removed because that's where the tourists go. I saw a girl fall today three times. It was on a cruise ship, trying to get back from the ocean. And I'd like to show you exhibit number one of about 100,000.
You may approach the bench.
I was looking for a high rock slip or something on there. I see what you're saying. Yeah.
I mean, it's dangerous, and you know, we're just asking for a lawsuit to have somebody fall and cut their leg open or foot open or whatever on one of those rocks. I mean, we went for six years with Pebley Beach Road closed, and one phone call to the coastal commission opened it up again. I understand what David is saying, that it takes a permit to get those rocks removed. It also, the coastal commission says that you have to have access to the beach and the water without endangering your life or your limbs. So those are two conflicting things, and I think that to get back home or whatever we have to do to get those, we're in the midst of summers here. And all the places, and believe me, I go to the beach, and you probably know that, the beach fills up and then everybody goes down below the wall. You can't go down below the wall now. It's rocks all the way to the top, and I mean, thousands of those. And I think, you know, all we hear is, yeah, we're going to do something about that. Well, three months later, yeah, we're going to do something about that. Do something about that. I mean, all it takes is, I mean, maybe the coastal commission's tough to get in touch with. I don't know.
No, they're very, they're very available.
Well, then I can't see why we can't, I mean, it's been suggested that we get 50 buckets and 50 kids and pay them a dollar a bucket to haul them out to the Pebley Beach. You think the coastal commission's going to shut us down for putting the kids to work? Let's just do something. Let's open that beach up because summer started.
Chuck, can I ask you a question? The rocks on Pebley Beach, is that what, that was from?
It was from right down to the left of the pier.
Oh, that, okay.
Thousands of them. I just call it Pebley Beach because it's appropriate.
Yeah. So we can, we were discussing that earlier. Yeah, we can take those out of there now.
I mean, I just think, don't discuss, act.
And the thing is, we do have, literally, we do have to take them out by hand.
But I think that's what Director Greenlaw was discussing with us earlier, is that they are intending to do that.
Well, a while back, I saw some pretty extensive equipment removing ships from the water down there. You can do what you have to do to make the beach right. I mean, those boats that came up from that storm, we, there was a lot of work done down there, and all we're asking is just move some rocks so we can use the beach.
Thank you. You weren't here, you must not have been here at the minute, the beginning of the meeting when we did have this discussion.
I don't live here, I just visit.
But it also is a menace to some of the plumbing and stuff we have under the pier.
Right.
So we don't want any sewage breaking and going into our harbor, so it is a big concern with it, Chuck. I know what you're talking about right there.
So we will put that in our priority workflow to make sure that we get down there and get staff down there by hand, and we're one rock closer right now.
Yep.
So if the community also wants to contribute to that, they can go out there and get, just like that, pull rocks out, and that would help us out.
Great, thanks, Bob.
Mike Sigris, 219 Beacon. I want to reinforce what Mr. Martin had to say. I also want to, I do want to question, first of all, your role versus the coastal commission's role by the adoption of your general land use plan and your coastal, local coastal plan. My understanding is that puts you in the role of not only having the authority but the responsibility for implementing the policies and procedures and expectations of the coastal commission. I don't understand why you're not in that role in this particular regard. Some of your policies say preserve and strengthen the visual and physical connections between the waterfront, the city center, and neighborhoods. Another goal in your plan is to provide a high-quality and functional mix of active and passive open spaces that are interconnected with the coastal resources. You don't have that right now. And I think that three months to look at this and talk to the coastal commission is unacceptable. I don't know why it's taken that long, but if it does take it having to be done by hand, I think that, I'll go down there and help you pick up some of those rocks and haul them out there. I think people in the neighborhood would help you. I think you need a long-term solution to this issue, not just a, you know, Band-Aid. I've been observing this for 25 years as a visitor and now a property owner here in Avalon, and I think it's a tragedy that you have one of the most beautiful tourism resources in the state, and yet we have one of the poorest qualities of a beach for kids to experience and people to experience, and what, people having to come here and find out they've got to put on shoes to walk into the water. I think it, I think it's something that needs to be solved if you have to get some kind of permission from the coastal commission like they have over on town where they run equipment up and down the beaches every day, rakes and things to pick up the trash and the garbage and the rocks and everything else. Why we have to go through some elaborate process to get that? If we do, let's get it so we can do it on an ongoing, continuous basis, on annually every year, as we get new rocks that can get washed in there, that we can clean them up, get them out of there, so that we can provide our tourists with the quality experience that they expect. This is not just about safety. It is about safety. It's also about our economy, our tourism-based economy, and we need to, we need to make sure that we do something to provide the quality of beach that people expect in California. So I, again, I encourage you to do something quickly. I will be down there, if you tell me tomorrow you want people to come down there and pick up rocks, I got a bad back, but I don't give a damn about that. I'll come down there and pick up rocks and help you get them out of there. I don't even go in the water, but I care about the kids and the elderly people who can't even enjoy this wonderful resource we have. Please do something now, tomorrow. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, let me, let me just, the gentleman, I think his frustration is a frustration that, you know, I remember when there was sand on South Beach. I remember pictures that I've seen of boats that gone up. What's happened over the years is that for whatever reason, and you have a study underway that the director is going to be reporting to you on what's going on, that sand, it wasn't stolen by John Phelps. That was the rumor I had heard when I first came here. But that, that, that beach has eroded, the tidal actions have moved the rocks, but I'm, and I'm no scientist, but let me, let me finish on this, Bob. And, and so the rocks now, emotionally, intellectually, I agree with the gentleman. What we were told specifically was we can take safety-ish measures, we can take safety steps at the steps, at the access point, and we can clear the drain. If there was a pipe, we can do that. Why it requires a permit is because it's in waters that they have jurisdiction, that's what they've told us.
The tidal zone.
If we could do it tomorrow without getting into a lawsuit, as the city attorney has just said, we would. We would, it should, you know, and probably some of those things, if we hadn't asked, maybe nobody would have known, but we, but we ended up asking because we thought it was the easiest of all things to do, and it turned out to be more difficult. But, but what I'll ask the director to do is have another conversation with Mr. Parsons, who's very engaging, he's very available, he's a, you know, and have another conversation based on the input that we had tonight from this gentleman and others about the situation, and say, look, what is it now? Can you, can you re-
Coastal Commission?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, he's with the coastal commission of Long Beach.
Yeah, we were asking for this, I asked for this two, two years ago. This has been going on for not three months, but three years, two or three years ago, which I'm the one that pushed for this bathymetric study and then this sand movement study. And, and I'm, I'm really frustrated, especially now that we're getting public outcry, because I have referred to that beach as the jewel of the town. That's the jewel of our, and it's just, I don't even want to say what it is to go down there, because I don't want to put the city at a liability, which we already are, but we need to get this done. I mean, this study that, that we're waiting for next, so the gentleman that spoke, both, both the gentlemen that spoke, both raised great points, and now we're getting the public outcry because of the deterioration of that. And that is a sad case for such a small town and what we have to offer there. That beach, that sand should be all the way up near the top of the seawall.
Yes, absolutely.
And I think that whatever we're doing, we're not doing it, we're not pushing hard enough. So has this person from the coastal commission ever made an appearance here in Avalon? Come to see what our problem is?
Yes. But the study, when will that study be done? That the, the study that they authorized, when you raised the issues before about the removal of the beach and the movement of the rock, that was, that'll be what, a month?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, at the end of July, that we should expect the results of that study plus recommendations. So also this point to what positively we've done, we did have the sand replenishment that you authorized, and that was done. So on this side of the seawall, the landward side of the seawall, that's all, you know, exactly what you would expect.
That's not, that's not what we're talking about.
Yes, exactly. We did present this to the coastal commission because we want to be on good terms with them with all of our projects that are coming up. So specifically, we asked about this because we wanted to make sure that we were doing the right thing once we took mechanized equipment down there.
So these gentlemen know, this study has taken, what, a year?
It's, it started in November.
So it's not, it's not something that you can make a phone call and somebody calls back and says, yeah, go ahead and do it? You know, this governmental stuff just, unfortunately, it's way frustrating for me, too, as well.
So the result of that-
Because I saw it coming down the road, and so we acted on this two, three years ago. We were acting on this and pushing for it. So it's really not this council sitting up here that's not doing anything. It's us being frustrated with you because the process takes a long time. It's not that we're not doing anything. We're just as frustrated as everybody else. It's driving me crazy when I go down there and I see that. It's just-
And so for that safety aspect, we will, we'll put that on our priority list of workflow to get that done.
50 years ago, when I used to go to that beach, I used to step off the top beach down to the bottom beach, this far. That's, that's where the sand used to be, okay? That's how I used to play in the sand. That's how I'd like my kid to play in the sand. But unfortunately, he's got to go down those steps, and everybody's got to go down, channel down those steps. And all the way across that beach, it was a step, maybe one foot to 18 inches down. And it, and it varied from tide to tide, you know? Sometimes it was a foot, 18 inches, but it was something that we also tended to as well. And there, there's something we can do here, and we'll find out in a month. And we will, we will fix this. Okay? We're driven to fix it.
Thank you, Bob.
I say we just make a joint service project with the local nonprofits and do a bucket brigade.
Yep.
Move the rocks. If we can move them by hand without a permit.
That's not going to fix it, though. There's still no sand down. The sand needs to be replaced.
But at least get rid of the rocks now.
At least get rid of the rocks.
The rocks might be an asset if, if the sand is replaced.
But we'll save the rocks.
Sheriff Hocking.
Good evening, ma'am. And city council members, I'm Captain John Hocking from the sheriff's department, and I'd like to give you a short, basically, some information on what the deputies have been doing lately and some information on our crime stats. To start with, everybody knows about the dog incident on April 18th, and we, based on a couple factors. One, the severity of the animal bite. Two, there was previous animal incidents with those same dogs, or at least one of those dogs. So what I did was I had our detective present the case to the Long Beach District Attorney. The Long Beach District Attorney determined that the dog owner violated the penal code for possessing and not controlling a vicious animal, a pit bull. They issued a $30,000 warrant for the person's arrest. Subsequently, we placed him under arrest, and they will have a court date in the near future. I'm also asking for the public's help in keeping your dogs off Front Street or Crescent Avenue. That has been the municipal code, been the law for a long period of time, and what we're seeing is a lot of the residents that live in Avalon are the ones that have their dogs out there. And they're sitting there drinking their coffee, and they have, and I'm not talking- talking about a vicious animal, but a Labrador-type dog. It's not a real small dog that they're holding. It's a larger dog, and they sit there, and it just puts the deputies in a bad position because we want to give warnings and we want to tell the people, "You can't have your dogs here," because if a resident is sitting there with their dog and then a tourist or visitor comes with their dog, how can I tell them it's okay and these people it's not okay because they're visitors? Everybody needs to have their dogs off Front Street. That's what the law is, and that's what we're dealing with. Another thing that I keep receiving calls on is speeding vehicles, whether it's golf carts, most of the time it's the small, what's the terminology used, mini autoet? Thank you. Autoets, and a lot of it is over on Pebbley Beach, by the mole, all the way out over by Buffalo Nickel right there. So I've had the deputies stopping vehicles that are speeding, and they've been giving them warnings. And that's what I'm here to do, is basically let the public know, please slow down, please stop for the stop signs. All we want is for them to be safe, and that's it. I'd be happy to entertain any questions anybody might have.
I got a question. I got a question. Cindy, you go first, though.
I just, I don't actually believe there are speed limit signs on Pebbley Beach Road.
We have ordered the signs, and they do have to be posted in order for it to be enforced strictly, so, yes, yes, ma'am, we will.
Okay, great. So that would be the first one that's helpful. Is it possible to stripe the road, or does it make sense to do that?
So that people know what side of the road that they're supposed to be on? Is that what you're saying?
Well, there's that, but there's, you know, when you're driving back and forth, you've got the rental golf carts, for example, that, you know, they're sightseeing, and they're probably driving way slower than, you know, a person might, but, you know, kind of people are all over the road out there.
In order to do proper enforcement, you need, it would be wise just to have that road striped. It's a major arterial, and as you say, sometimes maybe some people, some of us, don't pay as much attention, but with a line, it certainly helps, and that's certainly something that can be done. The road can be striped to define one side from the other, it certainly can be done. And we can certainly do that.
I mean, I'd like to, before we move with that, see what the financial impact would be and how much resource it would take to do that.
It's the painting. We don't have thermoplastic, which is the expensive thing to put on it, but we do have paint, and you see Marissa doing a lot of that. We may have to use a different method to do a long paint so that it properly, but we can certainly give that to you.
And a question for me for Bob is, isn't there something about the legal width of a road and that kind of thing?
Yeah, that was going to be my next question.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would have to talk to some traffic experts and public work experts.
Yeah, that road seems wide enough to put a stripe on if you want to, but then we also, we have pedestrian activity toward the edge. Want to make sure that maybe even put an edge line. All of those things will help slow down traffic, but there is a require, there is a cost to put it down and to maintain it, and likely it wouldn't be a big piece of equipment, but we probably need to step up from doing it with a roller. We need to have some, at least a parking lot, walk behind piece of equipment, because otherwise I don't think you'd like the look of it.
I know visually it doesn't seem appealing to strike the road, but it was a question from the community side.
And I think the speed, there is one speed limit sign that I saw last week. It's down there at the south end, and it's 20 miles an hour. It's posted 20 miles an hour at the gate.
So, speed limit signs, stripes in the road, but that road is, that road is in terrible shape as far as pedestrian-friendly. I mean, golf carts, this is a golf cart-friendly town. So we went from, I think my main concern when I brought up, I got some complaints also about some speeding vehicles out there, just because there was a close call, because someone was, a kid was walking through the pedestrian area out at Lover's Cove, and somebody was in a big hurry to get out to Pebbley somehow, and they didn't see the kid, and there was a close call there. I hate to, I'll be perfectly honest, I don't want to see a bunch of signs out there. I don't want to see stripes in the road, but if that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do. I don't want to push pedestrians over to the edge because there is no edge, and in some areas, it's too dangerous. There's nothing, we've been, that's something we've been working on. That was one of my goals as well. The first year I was in office was, let's fix that road so people can have a pleasant walk to Pebbley Beach instead of a dangerous walk to Pebbley Beach or a bike ride, because, but I appreciate your deputies patrolling out there and giving warnings. I don't know if, you know, as long as you just go out there and people see you, I'm sure they're going to slow down. My main concern was those cars, those little signs that, you know, I actually was the one who brought up that maybe we could, they maybe make a better quality of life for some people so they can go out into the interior. I didn't realize that they were going to try to like get into third or fourth gear going around town, you know? It's like, we're going for 15, 10, 15 mile an hour town. People in those signs do not need to like, you know, fly through the town, and that was my, that was my, that was my biggest fear right now. I really want to bring that back up and have a discussion when we bring our, have our vehicle meeting about how maybe we ought to, you know, make, take a timeout on these cars and, you know, limit them to so many until we figure out exactly if they're going to fit into our community, because right now, they seem to be the outcast. It's like, because they're going too fast. These people think that they're going to, they're going to get somewhere a lot faster if they get into third and fourth gear, and I don't appreciate it. But my question to you was, originally, when I was going to ask was, let's say somebody, I think I've asked this last time, too, they need to walk their, so your comment was, when people have their dogs and they're sitting, they like to sit on Front Street with their dogs, right?
Yes, sir.
I've seen also people that don't live here walking their dogs through town, which, and it's always been, mostly been a pleasant thing. I mean, besides some of the incidences, one or two incidences that we had, including the one on the pier, which was the last one, which brought up this whole issue about animals on Front Street. Because there was always, being in Avalon, laid-back town, it was always the spirit of the law as opposed to the letter of the law, and I know that drives some of the council people crazy because it's like, they want the law enforced, and it's like, because we have those laws for a reason, I understand that. But there's a seatbelt law, there's a speeding law, there's a stop sign law. Some of these, they need to be enforced to a certain point so nobody gets hurt. I mean, that's what the whole purpose is, is for safety for the general public. When you, can you, so you can walk a dog to the pier from, to the pier from somewhere, right? So you have a boat out on the pier, you can walk a dog out there, correct? Is that...
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, because I'm glad you're taking the softer approach on that, because people do need to get, and your deputies are being very wise about how they're enforcing it. I spend a lot of time down there, so I see what goes on and how they're reaching out to people and how they're being good about this, because I don't want, like I've said before, I don't want to strong-arm the law to come hammering into people that are used to taking, that are used to taking the easy route through town. I mean, there was a time when you could do this and it wasn't a problem, and for some reason, you know, there's just been some mean dogs that have showed up, and unfortunately, the owners have not been responsible, which has brought us to this point. The speeding cars has brought us to this conversation of now we got to have you guys enforce the law a little stronger, and I appreciate your interpretation and your sensitivity towards the matter for how things were and how things are going, so.
And I think you're exactly right. There's the letter of the law and spirit of the law. The thing that you don't hear about is when my deputy comes to me and tells me there was somebody sitting there drinking a cup of coffee, holding, with their dog on a leash, somebody else is walking by, their dog tries to attack the first dog, the guy's holding the dog back, and the reason you guys don't hear about that, there was no injuries, there was no arrests, there was no, if the dogs weren't on the Front Street to begin with, we wouldn't have that incident. So it's things like that, so.
So my question would be, have we written any tickets for anybody being there now? I mean, everybody's had enough notice, it's been around for a while now with this incident. Have we written any tickets for dogs being on Front Street?
No, we have not, and that's on, and that's on purpose.
I understand, and I understand what Joe's saying, too, but have, has code enforced, wrote any tickets, to your knowledge, city man?
No, they have not.
No?
No, not for dogs on Front Street, but they have written off-leash tickets.
But they have, but nobody's written for, tickets for a dog on Front Street?
No, we have not, and we work very close and very well with code enforcement, animal control.
Okay.
There is a point, though, I think you're, I'm a council member, if I am understanding, there is a point when if it's, you see someone, it's a repeat, you've told, you've warned them, you've warned them, you've urged them. I think some of the more recent, I was, I've been down there and seen the officers politely but sternly say, "No, you can't have your dog doing things on the beach where your children would be playing maybe that next day," and because the signs have said that for years. And as we, if there is the unfortunate situation with repeat offenders, then, you know, there's always the remedy of citations. A lot of, I think a lot of it, too, has been people who are coming into town, new people who maybe are not as familiar with the rules, although there may also be some locals who do it, too. I don't know.
Yeah, that's definitely a factor that we take into place. If they just get off the Catalina Express and they're walking through town, and I'll tell you, 99.99% of the either residents or tourists, very cooperative. "Oh, I'm sorry," and they dig their dog and they move out of the way, problem solved. Even the one where the two dogs are trying to get at each other, or one dog's trying to get at the other one, problem solved. But by me bringing it up, if the people, the residents of Avalon, would do us a favor and just not have your dogs out there, that would solve the problem. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff. And I would like to say this new air conditioning is working really well, and is it okay to turn it up a little bit, because I'm really cold?
Nice.
Or can I have a blanket?
We finally got it.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. Thank you. Adeline Young with Southern California Edison. So June is National Safety Month, and I'd like to focus my comments on electrical safety. According to the National Fire Protection Association, 4,700 home fires in the United States are caused by electrical failures or malfunctions each year, and these cause about 418 deaths, 1,570 injuries, and $1.4 billion in property damages. So many of the electrocutions and home fires can be avoided. Overloaded electrical circuits are a major cause of residential fires. So some of the warning signs of overloaded circuits include flickering, blinking, or dimming lights, circuit breakers that are frequently tripped, or fuses that are frequently blown, burning odor coming from the wall switches or receptacles, mild shock or tingle from your appliances, receptacles, or switches. And in fact, if your wall plate is warm, or there's crackling, sizzling, or buzzing from your wall plates, that could mean that you have an unsafe wiring conditions. If the wall plate is discolored, that could mean that there's heat buildup in this area. So all these are potential causes of electrical fires. So how you can prevent an electrical overload is to never use an extension cord or a multi-outlet converters for appliances. In fact, all major appliances should be plugged directly into a wall receptacle, and you should only have one plug for a heat-producing appliance at a time. So if you have too many extension cords, that means that you probably have too few of an outlet, and you probably need to have a licensed electrician take a look at it. Power strips only add additional outlets, but they don't, again, change the amount of power that's needed. So another thing is that you should make sure to use the appropriate light bulb or the watt for the, your light fixtures, because if you're using a larger watt light bulb than you need, that could also cause a fire. So whether you're a homeowner or a renter, electrical safety should be an important issue for your home, and awareness of the electrical hazards can help reduce the numbers of home fires, injuries, or death that occur each year. I do have information and infographics of what you should consider in terms of preventing home electrical, or home electrical overloads, and so I placed it out on the table over there. Thank you.
Thank you, it's nice to see you. Thank you, Adeline.
Mayor, if I could just mention that SCE has come out with an alternate fuel, use of electricity incentive program, and we're really excited about it, and we think that it's going to help the city move toward your goal of having a greener Avalon.
Okay, we're on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. Item number one is the actions that we ask that that be pulled off the agenda. The city clerk's assistant at the last meeting didn't do, when she was not here, he didn't do as good a job as he should have on some of this. Item two is a consideration of proposed professional engineering services agreement with Corolo Engineers. The recommendation is to review and authorize city manager to enter into an agreement with Corolo Engineers for an amount not to exceed $5,000. Item number three is consideration of the expansion of an existing agreement with DePere, Rosenblatt, and Litvak for vehicle hearing officer services. The city attorney is recommending the, they authorize the city manager to amend an existing agreement with that firm, authorizing to continue to serve as the city's vehicle hearing officer. Item number four is an emergency work for the fuel dock regulatory tank testing. The recommendation is to accept the report, and regarding necessary repairs and tests performed by Fast and Fair Construction doing business as Richard Maintenance in the amount of $7,500. I will say, though, that that is not my report, it's a report by staff. Item number five is Harbor Patrol Boat...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Oh, yeah, and actually, in the recommendation, it talks about the city manager's report. I don't believe that that is my report. I believe it's one of the director's, but I just, it's not that I disagree, I just, just for clarity, I didn't write it or...
Got it.
Yeah, thank you. Item number five, Harbor Patrol Boat Volvo D3 Engine Replacement. We need to replace one of the engines. We recommend that you award the bid to Harry's Marine in the amount of $27,125.75 for a Volvo Penta D3 200-horsepower engine. The current engine we have is not repairable according to our fine city mechanics. Item number six is a fuel dock float fuel dispenser purchase. This is needed to complete the facility. The recommended action is to authorize the Director of Public Works to purchase four dual hose-wain retail fuel dispensers in an amount not to exceed $88,000 after going through the city's normal procurement process. So we're essentially asking you to go out the bid. Item number seven, surrendered and abandoned vessel exchange grant. You do have a report. The recommendation is to, where is the recommendation?
$10,000.
Is to authorize the pass-through of surrendered and abandoned vessel exchange grant funds in the amount of $10,613 granted to the City of Avalon from the State Department, California Department of Boats and Water, excuse me, Parks and Recreation Division of Boating and Waterways, to assist the City of Santa Barbara in providing services relative to the proper and legal removal of disposal of the abandoned recreational vehicles. We will still have funds available because we do have one boat that will need to be removed if it's not voluntarily done. Item number eight is an amendment to Cirea's Cleaning Services Contract. Add fuel dock facility restrooms, our new restrooms. The recommended action is to approve a contract amended and authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to add the newly reopened fuel dock facility restrooms to the city's restroom cleaning and maintenance contract with Cirea's Cleaning Service in the amount of $557.50 per month. Item number eight is to authorize the purchase of replacement public shower meter boxes. This is authorize the Public Works Director to execute a purchase order for the replacement of the meter boxes and associated token system for an amount not to exceed an amount of $11,000. Item number 10 is a City of Avalon audited financial statement. You've already taken action on that. Item number 11 is to authorize the OpenGov annual contract public. Recommended action is to authorize the Finance Director to pay the annual invoice for OpenGov's cloud-based financial reporting products through the end of the five-year contract terminating on May 13, 2019. terminating on May 13, 2019, in the amount of $8,550, I believe that's per year. Waterside Permit Application, item number 12, Island Enterprises Incorporated. The recommended action is the city council make an affirmative finding that conditions set forth in the Avalon Municipal Code have been met, and grant the Waterside Project Application to Island Enterprises contingent upon the conditions that were referenced by the Harbor Master in his report. Item number 13 is voting delegate and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference, which will be in September of this year. The recommended action is to appoint Mayor Protem Ole Olsen as the voting delegate, and Mayor Annie Marshall and Councilmember Cindy Cassidy as the alternate voting delegates. Item B is to adopt a resolution designating the voting delegates and alternates for the annual League of California Cities Conference.
Okay, Council, what's your, what's your pleasure? Okay, poll two?
Two.
Poll three?
I agree to two.
Poll three?
Two, three.
For the hearing officer?
Two, three.
Oh, so we're pulling three?
Yeah, two, three.
Two, three, four?
You got four?
Four, and six.
I'll pull five, please.
And five?
And five.
Okay.
And six.
And I'm sure twelve?
Twelve, yeah, and nine, please. Nine, oh, I just got a question on nine.
Okay.
For the showers, are we gonna, is that ever gonna go out to RFP, or?
It did.
It already did.
It already did, okay, great.
Oh, the public, yeah, it turned over to Ivan Leyva, didn't it?
No.
It never went up for a formal, no, he's just still the temporary.
Oh, he's still temporary, okay.
We've gotten through the water conservation part of it now, we need these meters, and Joe, to answer your question, we really hope to start that process at the, in the fall.
Okay, because I keep getting people to ask me about it, so...
Yes, has not been assigned to them.
Okay, great, glad to hear it, I mean, because we need to have the process there, and anyway, there's some people that are interested in it, but you know what, Ivan's doing a great job, and we appreciate what he's doing for us, just being the interim, so.
Okay, so, Ole's gonna try to make a motion.
Is he?
Move staff on seven, eight, 10, 11, 13.
11 and 13?
Mm-hmm. A second.
10's already done. Seven, eight, 11, and now we've got...
11, 13.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any comments?
Call for the vote. All ayes.
Okay, we're going to item number two.
Item number two is a request for approval for an additional $5,000 for the Corolla Engineers. These people have been working with us on analyzing the DSAW issues and going forward, and since we're in the process of working with Edison to come together with a grant application, we would like to have their services during this process on an as-needed basis to assist us with analyzing Edison's grant, the schematics, and helping us go forward with the DSAW. They've done DSAW plants before, and so that's why we're asking for this, not to exceed an amount of $5,000.
Has, has this been discussed with Edison at all, like, do they, did they feel the need for something like this?
Well, what we agreed with Edison is that we would share each other's reports, so we have their report that they shared with us, and we've given them our reports, and part of this is to analyze each other's reports.
Yeah.
So that we can come to an agreement when we submit the grant application. So this is pursuant to that conversation we've had with Edison.
I'm sure that Edison probably doesn't, doesn't want this done, that's why I think we should do it.
I guess if they are the applicant, we are not the applicant, and we are going to support what they do, because we're in agreement with what we, that we agreed on the three or four points of where we're going.
It's alternate one.
What's that?
It was alternate one in the Frankel report.
Right, so I guess if that's what they're going through with the, for the Prop One funds, and we're commu, you know, and we are communicating with, at a staff level, I, I don't see the need personally, but that's just me.
I thought the staff, our, our staff in Edison was working together to do the Prop One funding.
Yes, we are, yes, we have Michael Baker.
And part of it is, is that we're looking at, for instance, Edison's cost of the plant were different than our cost, and so, is there an explanation for that? That's what these people would be looking at. Looking at is, is, again, because while Edison may be applying for this, we want to, if we're involved in this and have our approval, the chances of getting the grant application approved is much greater.
But I get, okay, but if...
Do you actually trust Edison?
On these, on these things, to get $10 million for us, yes, I do, I do trust them, and, and I...
I don't.
And I don't know how much the, whoever reviewing the applications, I mean, they will be, they would be scrutinizing those things as well if they thought costs were, were out of the ordinary, that's what people do that review grant applications. So, I mean, I could, I could find a better way to spend that $5,000, personally, just So what do we want to do with item number two?
So how, how effective do you think this study would be, once, I mean, what is the, so she raises, Randy, the mayor raises a good point, what can we do if we find there's some, some elements within the proposal that they're trying to go out and get that aren't really in line with what's gonna be good for the town? What is, what's our chances of being able to, to change that with this report? I mean...
Well, it's a matter of sharing information, which is what we've agreed to do with Edison, and to make certain that, that based upon, for instance, is their report, does their report truly, will it address the water shortage issue? Is it realistic? Is the timeline realistic? So that's part of it, it's, again, is to help us go forward with their application.
I'd like to personally see, see this done, because they left one element out, which is the feeding Hamilton Cove. I mean, Hamilton Cove is putting in another 80 units out there, and they're still running off, running water off the, the reservoir, that should be an emergency waters, storage, not primary water storage. That's relatively a little city out there. I'd like to know what, what this report's gonna reveal.
The one difference, if I may, if I may, the one difference, I think, is the, that Bob Greenlaw is, is a, not only is he the Director of Public Works, but he's a licensed civil engineer, professional engineer, so while the, while, in the city attorney's report, they talk about a study of $5,000, in conversation with Mr. Greenlaw, he said that there may be a few points that would not be that much, that he would, that we would want some investigation, but it wouldn't be to redo a new study. So I think when the city attorney made the recommendation of up to $5,000, it doesn't mean it has to be, it's gonna be in...
I think it's gonna be about $1,000, from what they've told me, and they've already preliminary reviewed this report, and they've got some, some thoughts. I think it's gonna be three or four hours of work, but we don't know, again, because your purchasing ordinance says everything, $5,000 has to go to the council, they've already spent about $4,600 total on the previous work, and so if we wanted to, to work on anything further, we can need council approval. Doesn't mean that we're actually gonna spend it, the city manager determines whether they're actually gonna use it. And again, we're only suggesting them because they've actually done many DSAW plans, so this is not new to them.
So that there's, if I may, Mayor, just to say this, so there's no misunderstanding, we're not at odds. You have indicated your support for alternate one that was in the Val Frankel report, that is, based on that recommendation or that direction, we are in line, we have written letters of support to the Bureau of Reclamation, we have met with the Bureau of Reclamation in support, we have met with the state on Department of Water Resources for, we have, everything that we have said has been supportive based upon that report, so, so we're, we're in line, but, you know, some, and...
Yeah, what I can add to that, anytime you're in a high-dollar public works project, and you invest for, you know, 50 years of improvements, you want to have a peer review, and that's essentially, that's what Corolla's doing, it's helping us peer review, they're not redoing the work, they're just providing additional input with some experts. And I'll give you an example, like the Orville Dam disaster that happened up there, they brought experts from around the country, finally, in, and provided their input to come in and find out, and to get the most cost-effective solution. So I think that's what we're doing here, and I think it's a prudent way to spend some, it's a prudent way to invest in these, in dollars coming up, okay?
I guess I would be curious to know if, if our working relationship is that good with Southern California Edison at this point, are they, and May, I don't know if Adeline can speak to this, because she's in the audience, but, and you saw this agenda item, and I can, can you speak to this at all? I mean, I would like to say this comes from a level of trust, and we're working together. I want to know if this creates any weird feelings.
I would, it, I think we're working together, and this is just strengthening our relationship, that we're agreeing, and then we're bringing additional experts in, we're not...
And Adeline is right behind you, so I was asking her, too. Because we haven't discussed this, and so I don't know.
So I can speak to the fact that Corolla is, you know, credible engineering firm, and we've, we have no problems sharing information with them, and that we have. So, as, as the city manager mentioned, we, we are working closely with, with your staff, and expect to do so. The recommendation number one was something that we had recommended, and the city also agreed with that, so I think we're moving in the right direction. So this, this is really up to you.
No, but do you see this as, as a, you're saying we're working in the right direction, I just don't want this to say, oh, wow, and now they're gonna have somebody checking our schoolwork, you know, and I don't want it to be perceived as that, because it is your company, it's Edison's company.
It's our town, though.
I under, I understand that, Joseph.
So I, I, we have not, to be frank, I have not had a discussion internally about this, so I can't let you know what the company line is, but we are working closely with the, the firm. If you do have, if you do hire them, we will definitely continue that conversation with them.
Okay, all right.
And we will be updated regularly?
Yes. Yes.
Because when's the application due?
Well, it's not even, it's not even out yet. It's not even out yet.
Can I ask a dumb question? Since we have Bob, wouldn't Bob be the person that should pull the trigger on when we send some stuff out?
Yeah, what Bob will be, the, Bob will be the one who will say, hey, I'll focus on this, or focus on that, we're not do redoing the report, in fact, we have had that conversation. So he would be, as, as a city's licensed professional engineer, civil engineer, and I always, he's always civil also, is that, is that he would be the one who would say, yeah, I need this, or I need that, but not to say we're gonna redo, reinvent this, that, that was, I think, our conversation, Bob.
Okay, okay, comments, what's the...
Well, I just, I just think this is premature. I think, since the report's nowhere around, Bob hasn't had a chance to look at it, Bob doesn't know if he needs to pull the trigger or not, I think this is just putting the cart before the horse, as they say in their country. I don't, I don't disagree with the concept, it's, it's a timing issue.
Should we then just say, put this $5,000, we can just put it on and, and maybe budget it in the next one, and then deal with it then?
You gonna hold it over?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
We don't even know if Edison's gonna come through with what they've said they were gonna do.
They will.
Well, we are, and I want to appreciate Adeline's comments, we, we've been going to grant sessions, Department of Water Resources, we've had representatives, they've had representatives there, we are coordinating on the DAC designation, using Michael Baker to, to move forward with that DAC information, Amanda's, Amanda Padra's been, been working with Michael Baker and them on that, and their, and their staff, so, and, and all that we say to the funding people is, we are in support of alternate one, as defined in the Frankel report that you have given direction on, that's what, that's our conversation, we've said that. What is exciting, what is exciting was something that some of the council members is, there's another opportunity for grant funding to look at the whole water system, as a system underground aquifers, and that's not in this application, or in this...
They didn't even identify that, Val Frankel did not even do that.
And that's what the Bureau of Reclamation...
That's what we asked for.
Yeah, the Bureau is, is willing to help us all do that.
That might have been yours, but I don't think any of the rest of us were under that assumption, Joseph.
Okay, so if it doesn't rain this year, we're back into the same situation we were last year.
No.
Next year.
We've got three years of rain, we've got three years of water in the reservoir.
Reservoir, yeah, and we're gonna use it, too.
We, and, and...
I'm just not that secure yet, we did, we're just coming out of it.
It's not, I would, I agree with you, wholeheartedly there, and that's why...
So I think we ought to be as diligent, as diligent as we can, and do, do our own research, and not put our, all of our trust in Edison, who was partially to blame for some of this, this short-sightedness that got us into the situation that we're in, that we were in last year, so, anyway, we had a good rain, thank God for that, but you know what, it had nothing to do with Edison, besides the fact that they're good, they're a decent, reasonable delivery system, and everybody works hard, but their top brass has, has pretty much thrown, kicked us to the curb, so I hope they come through for us, and that's all I'm doing, is hoping, because I've seen, I haven't seen it yet, I mean, I hope their staff is working hard with them, and they're cooperating, but I think every, every bit of research that we can do to find out exactly where we stand is, if it's $1,000, I mean, come on, look at, we're spending $27,000 on a motor for one of our boats, and we can't spend $1,000 to figure out what's going on with the water?
But, but, Councilman, in, as Mayor Protem said, first of all, we don't have $5,000 budgeted for this year, July 1 is right around the corner, they, the application isn't even near, near done, because the guidelines aren't even out yet, so, so I think, if we want to do this, we just make sure it's in the next year's budget, which is a month away.
I just want to clarify, the, the purpose of this was for them to analyze the Frankel report that's already there, so that's what this was for.
It's not premature.
Oh, that didn't say that at all.
No.
It didn't say that.
No.
It, it, it says, "The proposal prepared includes an evaluation of the feasibility study for Catalina Island DSAW plants 1 and 2 prepared by Edison," that's exactly what the Frankel report was.
That's exactly what it says.
And so that's what they...
Sorry.
Oh, for something that's already done.
Right, yeah, we've got the Edison report, we'd like them to review it, and we think that'll be less than $1,000 bucks. They've already taken a look at it.
I would agree to $1,000.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion for $1,000.
Second.
Yeah, no, that, that's, what, $1,000? No, no, we need to, it says up to $5,000 in, in the staff report, so...
Not to exceed, right?
You know, he said it could be $1,000, I'm not gonna say it's $1,000, and then it comes back to us next year, next, next, in the next meeting, because it's 1,200 or 1,500? Come on, let's not penny pinch, this is the City of Avalon we're talking about right now, this is, this is the biggest, this is the biggest issue we have on, in the entire city, is water.
I guess, okay, so, so they, okay, now we're evaluating a report that's already been done.
I know, I don't need to spend $243 to $284 an hour to have somebody evaluate a report that I've read.
And that's already done, and what are we gonna do about it?
You're the expert?
No, no, I'm not, and I'm not...
I'm not an expert either, that's why I'd like to see this.
But this certainly doesn't play into, you know, building goodwill and better friendships and working together. If we have questions on the report, let's sit down with Edison and ask those questions.
We've tried to work together with them for years, and they just kicked us to the curb, okay, so the trust is over with me, I want to see some actions.
Okay, if somebody, okay, Cindy had a motion on the table.
I second it.
I know.
Motion to exceed...
That's not to exceed the thousand.
Not to exceed the thousand, that was the motion.
How do you say it? You can always go back on the coin.
Okay, how about 2,000, come on?
Going what?
It's not a joke, I'm not laughing at all.
No, but, but, well, there's a motion on the table for $1,000.
Okay, I'll be fair, I'll amend my motion to $2,000, let's call for the votes.
I'll amend my second.
Let's try that, see what we can do there.
All ayes.
Thank you.
But I, I, I'm certainly not saying that I do not agree with spending taxpayers' dollars to go out and evaluate, an evaluation that was already...
I'm putting the trust in our city staff that we are moving forward to work together. Audra's been in the meetings, Bob Greenlaw's been in the meetings, you know, members of the public have met with Edison, I've met with Edison, there is information being transferred. So at the moment that that stops, I think that, that we come back to the table and say, hey, this isn't working. But right now Edison has shown good faith in transferring information over. And I would really like us to be considerate of the taxpayer dollars that we spend, because of course we're spending them on the other side through the ratepayers having to pay for Edison's dollars as well. So we're kind of paying for it twice.
I think you're wrong. It should have gone 5,000. Or whatever. I'm glad you went up to two, at least we went there, and whatever that'll buy, let's go from there, okay? I'm not going to penny pinch when it comes to water, though, right now. I mean, this is ridiculous.
Okay, bear on, item three.
Item number three is a consideration of amending the contract with DePierre Rosenblatt and Litback for vehicle hearing officer services. Your municipal code has the position of vehicle hearing officer that's to hear appeals and matters on like, for instance, oversized vehicles and stuff. And so you've traditionally used an attorney for this, she is retired, and so you have one attorney that's been handling these matters for the last year. Again, that contract is up around $5,000, and now it's time to go forward or do something else with the hearing officer. And Dudley can answer any questions about the particular work that the hearing officer does.
Dudley, the back. Here he comes.
So that's our report.
Did someone pull this one? Did you have a question?
Yes, it got pulled.
Yeah.
So this is another attorney, this is not you guys.
We can't do it.
You guys can't do it?
We cannot legally do it because, because we advise Dudley on, so.
On the hearing.
On the hearing and how to do it. So under state law, we have to have another.
So it's not you guys, it's another firm that comes in and does that, gets to the hearing. Okay?
Okay. And right now the municipal.
At the same rates that we have.
And right now the municipal code says, thou shalt have a hearing officer. So until we revise the municipal code, this is where we are.
Correct.
Okay. And secondly, it says, so I can appreciate your comments, city manager. However, right now it's in the municipal code that we shall have one, so we shall move forward so that we don't keep the people at bay that are looking to.
Make a motion.
Come before us.
Item number three, authorized city manager to amend an existing agreement with DePierre Rosenblatt and Latovic LLP, authorizing the law firm to continue to serve the city's vehicle hearing officer.
Second.
Move to second. Comment? Call for the vote.
All eyes.
Item four.
Oh, item number four, okay. This is, you passed an ordinance about a year ago that says for emergency repairs, the city manager can authorize the emergency repairs to be done so that you don't have to wait for the council, or you don't need a four-fifth vote. And what, so this was an instance where we had emergency repairs and the state law requires that the city manager report back to you on what the money was spent for. So this is the purpose of this report. If you have any particular questions about the merits of this, the Public Works Director can answer any questions. But this is something new, this is the first time we've done this.
Okay, so.
Usually we come forward with permission by a four-fifth vote. And the council decided about a year ago that it would give authority, I think it's up to $25,000, where we didn't have to go through that process.
Okay, we're doing tank testing on the tanks because they're not brand-new tanks, correct? Is that what's going on out there for fuel?
Harbor Master's coming up behind you, Bob.
Yeah, this is another one.
It's a SB 989 test that's required every three years, and when you close, and when you reopen.
But the tanks are used, right? They're not brand-new?
And it wasn't really on the tanks, it was on the sumps of the tanks where they fill, they fill them up with water to make sure that any liquid that came out of the tanks wouldn't go into the soil around it.
I see.
The old test needed to be done at two inches above any port, and the new is four.
The sump is, is, the tank is actually encapsulated by the sump?
Correct.
And the sump is a safety measure?
Correct.
Okay.
So we knew this was going to happen, needed to be tested after the.
We knew it needed to be tested, but we didn't know that it had to be four inches above, that was the repairs. And that's what the LA County Public Works had the notice of violation on.
That was my concern, if we knew we were going to have to do this, why wasn't it in the original bid when they did all this?
Well, it had to be done after the contractor did it, and then we learned that it had to be four inches above instead of two, and they had to come in and make repairs and do it again. Actually, the county, the county inspector changed the conditions as, and made us at that four inches after we had tested it. So there was a second test, actually. There was one test with the contract, and then this was reopening the fuel dock again. They made us do this additional test.
For some reason, I'm not surprised. It's just how rigorous it is to run a city government. It's amazing what they come up with, all the regulations we have.
That's my initial thought. That was done at the beginning.
Okay. Is everybody okay with this?
Yeah, item four.
They got to do it.
Move to receive and file the report regarding the necessary repairs and tests performed by Fast and Fair Construction, EBA Richard Maintenance in the amount of $7,500.
Can that be a not to exceed $7,500? Or it is? Okay.
I second that.
No comments? Call for the vote.
All eyes.
Item number five.
Okay. Okay, I think the reason I'm asking about this is, I'm trying to get some insight as to how our budget's going to work for the next year, because I think we, and then I wanted to ask JJ also, is, is 5,000 hours pretty good amount of time on a engine? I mean, that doesn't seem like much.
It doesn't seem like much, but I mean, it is what it is. We don't know why it failed.
Really?
It just, there was a crack in the block.
And the warranty was expired on it?
Long time ago.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because 5,000 hours doesn't seem like much, but whatever, I know you guys run constantly and you're always out there, which is really, you're stewards for the, for the entire town, you know, you receive the people and good and bad, whatever comes our way, so I appreciate that. And you absolutely need this motor, and that was the main thing. I wanted to get it just on, because I think we've replaced a few of these, correct, over the?
Well, we have over the years. I mean, we try to budget one for every year, and we have the two, the D3 and the D4. So every other year we try to budget them out, so we put a lot of hours on them. I mean, they're constantly, constantly running, so.
Okay, I want to make sure that, you know, we have this budgeted for next year. I think that was the main reason.
I think the Harbor Master has put one in for a D, another D3 and a D4, I believe, I'm not positive.
Okay, great. Make a motion, let's see, award, let's see, bid to Harry's Marine in the amount of $27,125.75 for Volvo Pentad D3 200 horsepower engine.
Second.
Call for the vote.
All eyes.
Okay, now we're on. No written six? Six.
Six?
Four dual-hose Wayne refuel, retail fuel dispensers.
Okay, so this is for the gas pumps, the dispensers that are on the seasonal fuel dock. And so the fuel dock project actually built the main pier, and the rest of the stuff that was outside of the contract that's being done by its staff is the dinghy dock and the ramp that's going down to the dinghy dock, and then seasonal fuel dock, which is two floats, and each of those floats have two dispensers on them, they're dual dispensers. So we have four hoses of diesel, four hoses of gasoline, and they're the same dispensers that we actually installed with the contract on the pier. So we want to have the similar equipment, so when we go out there to maintain them, we're not getting a different brand. So what we've presented in this report is there's actually only two distributors in the United States for Wayne fuel dispensers, and we've shared that information on, in the report of what our findings are so far. But we also are under a time crunch to get the seasonal fuel dock installed, so that's why I've come for you to ask for what we found as almost $85,000 and potentially $3,000, maybe in some incidental supplies needed to install those. But we will go out to a bid process to get this done so that we can get the right spec and the right, right price per our code.
So it sounds, it looks as though with the two that you, you got an apple and an orange?
That's correct. And we weren't satisfied with the results on that, one of them was meeting the requirements that we needed to be exactly what we had with the other dispensers that were installed. So we want to get apples and apples, and then get that priced out, and then make a purchase through our procurement process.
Because the pump measure control seems to be the other big ticket I did in that thing. So if the 40, so anyway, so, so again, that was not a formal bid?
No, that was not a formal bid. Those were, those were quotes, and one of those was actually the supplier, the vendor that supplied it for the fuel dock, the one that had, gave us a quote for $85,000, and it looked like it included it to our spec, and they were very knowledgeable of what we needed to put on the seasonal fuel dock. But was that their best price? No, it was not a formal quote, I mean, a formal bid.
It's a big difference.
Yeah, so we want to make sure that that's, so, but at the $5,000 threshold, then we'll be coming back to you, and I really, I want to get these purchased. So that's why we're kind of bumping that $5,000 up to $88,000. Give us the authorization for that, and then we go out and get that procurement done.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions?
So moved by Mayor Protem, Sarah Second.
I'll second.
Call for the vote. Comments in the community? Call for the vote. Okay.
All eyes.
Item 12, correct?
Mm-hmm.
See, moving right along.
No.
No?
Number nine.
Number nine, that was not included in Protem's motion.
Number nine?
Number nine. You had a question, Joe, but it wasn't included in the original, so if we could just get a vote on it, please.
I didn't, I didn't pull it, did I? Oh.
I think you meant eight, you had a question on number eight, and I think you.
No, he had a question on the shower boxes, and then he answered it, but, but we forgot to mention it in the outset. So I don't think we have.
I'll make a motion to approve that the city council authorize the Public Works Director to execute a purchase order in the replacement of the meter boxes and associated token system for not to exceed amount of $11,000.
I'll second.
Move to second. No further question, call for the vote.
All eyes. Thank you.
Now we're going to item number 12. Waterside Mid-Application Island Enterprises.
Okay.
And I know, I know they're in the audience.
Do you want a staff report, Mayor, first, or would you like from the Harbor Master, or would you, however you want to conduct this?
Harbor Master.
Harbor Master, let's start with you, please.
So Island Navigation, who used to have the shoreboat franchise with the city, has applied for a waterside permit to conduct their operations with their shoreboats according to their PUC tariff, which allows them to pick up passengers in numerous places along the island.
What, what I was, I had a question, it says they're able to pick up any float in the whole harbor?
That's what, that's what they had requested, and I was recommending that they use their seasonal summer float for the summertime, and when they have groups that come in off the express, they're able to go in and pick them up off the Cabrillo-Mole floats.
Any Cabrillo-Mole float, even the ones where the express land?
When the express isn't there, they would be able to drop in and pick them up.
Hmm. With the regular shoreboats?
Yes.
They're, they're old shoreboats, yeah. Good shoreboats. Um, yeah, that was my question, that seems kind of strange, because nobody else can pick up at those docks, can they?
They do.
They do?
Yeah, the parasail boats, dive boats.
They pick up at the, at the Catalina Express floats, too?
Four and five.
Four and five, but, okay, but not at the main float, not one and two, right?
They can, as long as there's not an express boat there, but those docks are higher, so people don't choose to go over there.
Okay, I see. Is that what they're asking for, is those docks as well?
They're asking for any of the Cabrillo-Mole floats.
So, so Mr. Stickler, by getting, giving us this letter this afternoon, you threw these, really kind of threw a bug in the ointment, and I wasn't even really sure what you're looking at. You've made it rather difficult for us at the final hour to come with that letter. Do you want to talk a little bit? Is this okay, counsel?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
We totally got confused.
We didn't try to, anything, we didn't get the staff.
Come on up, come on up to the mic, thank you.
Get the staff report, Nate.
Bye, Adeline.
Thank you. Yes, we didn't, we didn't get the staff report until Friday, late, and we were, you know, had the weekend to get a letter together to come to you, because there's a lot of issues that, you know, that are on the staff report, and Joe brings up one, we've been doing it for years, we pick up the campers that come in from the, you know, the express or, or whatever boat they come over, and we take them down the coast. To have them walk all the way into town and down onto the pier would be, you know, not productive.
Right.
So we've been doing this for years, it's not something that, you know, there was a study done by the city that actually talked about the shoreboats and, and how maneuverable and what they did in town, and, and that's how you form the franchise. That study was done a few years ago, and that was to talk about where the harbor collects the mooring fees and the entrance to the harbor, the Phoenix, whether it was getting too big for the harbor, et cetera, et cetera. And out of that report, the shoreboats were, you know, commended on the size they were and the maneuverability and how they get around all the traffic and, you know, get people in and out of the town.
I'm going to interrupt to get, cut a little closer to the chase. So you had the recommendations by, basically what, what Harbor Master Bray wrote, and I guess, I'm not sure, because it seems like there was communications going back and forth. So I thought there was that some kind of resolve was kind of coming forward, you know, $17,000, the exclusive or non-exclusive, and then I get this, and I guess now I'm really confused on what you're really wanting.
Well, we're totally confused, too, because part of the problem is, is during the time when this all came up, we asked for a waterside permit back in January, and Brian indicated that he wasn't going to give us a waterside permit until the shoreboat issue was resolved, which didn't get resolved until February. So, and then when February, March came along, he wrote us a letter, and that was about the time, we were trying to get the float over here, we had all those storms. I sent him an email and saying, right now I cannot meet with the city attorney, and I can't meet with him because of the issues that are going on in the harbor, and I'm trying to get the float over here in between storms and a bunch of other things. So we never had the opportunity to meet with the city attorney to discuss the other items that are on that list, which were the bullet point. To me, this meeting's a little premature to vote on it, because we, we really haven't had a chance to talk to the city attorney or Brian, but because it was put on the agenda for this, for the sixth, which Brian indicated he was going to put it on the agenda to move he was going to put it on the agenda to move it along, we decided to come. So there's a lot of issues to talk about and try to resolve. I'm not sure we're going to get through them tonight unless you want to, you know, move forward with the staff recommendation.
Well, I guess one of the things that, you know, because we're getting into the season. And I think one of the things that I would think is is one of those points that you all got to work out quickly because we do have a new shoreboat operator and we want him to be successful as as you were successful. And I want to make sure that, I mean, that exclusive versus non-exclusive use of your mooring. We are in the season, May to October. And I'm curious, I'm just curious if you're willing to do a non-exclusive on that on that site, on your.
On the float?
On your float.
Yeah, we indicated that we wouldn't have any problem with the other shoreboat operator offering operating off. He was willing to pay part of the maintenance and the insurance and all the things that come along with it. And I think we dropped a number for just the maintenance was was about $12,500.
Right, okay.
And with that, we never got any response from the city on that. I mean, it wasn't either way. We never talked to the shoreboat operator if he's interested in that. In fact, we we had a short conversation on the pier and we were a little concerned whether or not the boat would even fit there, their new proposed boat. Would it be, you know, a situation where they might, you know, be more of a headache for them than, you know, because we're a little more maneuverable and and the boats that they're using now kind of stick out. So they would take up more than the spot that we have for them.
I mean, I just don't want this thing to drag out until, I mean, based on what's going on, do we want to pull this and and say you you all come to a meeting within the next week and get this stuff resolved and come back or and just, you know, there's no or go ahead.
How about we have a motion to approve the permit with and via staff recommendation excluding five and seven? Let them sit down and talk about that.
Wait, hold on.
Five is to deny the city mooring and seven is nightly mooring fees. Let them.
What is the I'd like because there is information on those moorings. Those moorings were originally issued for for the shoreboats.
Correct. Yeah, if you don't mind me speaking to that. First of all, the shoreboat franchise and the mooring permit, I think you're misreading it. The float mooring permit came along way later than the franchise and the mooring or the before the franchise, when we had two shoreboat operators. We applied for those moorings under Island Navigation. We got the moorings, we got two. And then when we bought out Houston Snyder, we got five more. We gave two back because we only needed five boats and that was part of what we thought we needed for the harbor. We continued on for a few years and then they had the study because they were worried about the harbor and the congestion. And that's how you formed your ordinance. In fact, the study was the basis of the ordinance. Without that, you probably would never have the language vital services, et cetera, et cetera. Because at that time, Jim Radcliffe was, you know, the city attorney who just went off, became our attorney. And he was very familiar with the whole shoreboat thing between the two competitions and the past, even before that, when they had competition. So those moorings were ours. I mean, we leased them. We've leased them for 30 some years. And the moorings that they're talking about in the later, when we when Bud Smith told us that, you know, we couldn't have the city float or operate off the city float, that we'd have to share it with everybody else, we he made a suggestion that we build our own float. And so we did. And he said, you build that float, you can do whatever you want out there as long as you're paying for it. And we can open up the city floats for, you know, at that time, the patrol boats and Charlie Wagner's boat, I think, was the big issue. He'd park it there and go down the pier. And we had no place to land. So out of that, we started getting into the cruise ship business. And the next amendment to the to the franchise was we needed more space. We started a glass bottom boat company that was approved. The glass bottom boat company was told that they could tie on the floats as long as they expand it 20 feet. So we ended up cutting the middle of our float at the time, which was 60 feet, and making it longer so that we could put the two boats on and have the shoreboat operation in the So back to the moorings. In the in the float mooring agreement, I actually helped write that. It was if you read it, it's for us because I was concerned that if we started the cruise ship business, we didn't have a place for the moorings. I went to the city and said, wait a minute, we're a vital service. Now that we have the franchise, you need to give us these moorings. So in the in the float mooring agreement, we're the only ones that can cancel it. And the reason we can cancel it is because I was concerned if you tried not to give us the moorings, we would be in trouble with the contracts that we entered into for three, sometimes five years. So read it. The moorings that we had before, it even says right in there, the company leases five moorings, already has it. In addition to that, you're going to provide us five additional moorings as they become available, which never happened. We ended up with what the Harbor Master called a mooring of opportunity. But we were supposed to go on the top of the list to get moorings because we were building a fleet to service the cruise ships. And we never got those. We ended up with a mooring of opportunity, which means we could side tie to our boats, you know, that are on the five moorings or use our float to tie on and only use five moorings during the summertime. And we rafted them together for the next, you know, 15 years with no moorings. I brought it up to the city many times, why haven't we gotten any moorings? We've been on the list. And the answer always was, you already have enough moorings, it's working. So.
The purpose of the motion was not to take away those moorings, it was to take them off of the staff recommendations and let you continue to discuss that.
I understand that. But I think she asked me the question about it. I'm trying to explain it to her.
That's okay. Yeah, I'll take that blame. But I mean, hey, we're all educated now. Can we can we hear from the Harbor Master on any response? Brian, would that be amenable to you?
The staff report is trying to move along, getting them their waterside permit. They've got their boats here and I'm trying to get them back in business legally to be operating what they want to do. So if we want to pull certain items off there, table those and and come back to you at a later date, that's fine with me. That's great. That'll get the conversation rolling, but that'll also get them in business to do their camp runs that they want to do.
That's the purpose of the motion.
Okay, I like the motion. And so what items were they, five and seven?
Five and seven.
So tabling five and seven.
Tabling five and seven.
With direction with direction for staff to work to meet with Mr. Stickler and see if we can resolve this.
Can we put a time limit on that?
Yeah.
Can we put a time limit on that meeting instead of letting it drag out?
Yeah.
And if they don't comply with that, then everything's off.
How about by the next?
That's what I'd like to have.
By the next city council meeting, maybe?
I'd like to put a time limit.
What do you guys think?
Nothing's resolved and everything's nullified.
Can you deal with that?
That's what I'd like to do. Negotiate five and seven.
Okay, but isn't there more to negotiate than five and seven?
Five and seven relates to the float.
And so that would also then tie in with the exclusivity or the non-exclusivity of the thing?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my thing. Okay.
And then your other concern is addressed in item two, which already said that they would have occasional use of the Cabrillo, like float four and five, really.
Oh, yeah. And then and then this is includes that the new shoreboat service get gets access to their dock.
That's part of the negotiation.
It's part of the negotiation, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I second all these motions.
I'd like to, okay, he wants to make a motion, but I'd still like to see a time limit on it.
Yeah.
Time limit on it. And if this is not met, then everything's off. I think that'll maybe speed up the process and get things going and no lollygagging back and forth with emails. Let's get this done. Every business is starting. I'd like to see some kind of things like that.
What time limit you talk in?
Do you think you all could negotiate and get it bond by the next meeting? I'm looking at Mr. Stickler and the Harbor Master.
By the next meeting, the staff report has to be in by Monday, so I don't think so.
Okay. How about the meeting after that?
No, no, wait, no, a week from.
A week from Monday.
The 20th, right? A week from Monday.
So you have 10 days. Do you have?
No, they have to be in by the 16th.
Okay, and what's today?
Today's the 6th, 10 days.
It's 10 days.
Somebody likes their agenda out early.
Yeah, that's right.
So here's we can we can we understand it's two weeks from tonight. We can notice this item on the agenda and we'll get you the staff report as soon as we're done. But we understand that there will be a matter in two weeks on this.
So even if we, okay, but we might receive that one late, but none of the others.
You're going to get the rest of the agenda on time. And as soon as that staff report is done.
Okay, okay, council members, hand us, thank you. Okay?
I amend my motion.
I second it.
Samson.
Great. Call for the vote. All right.
All ayes.
Okay, general business, item 14.
Oh, general business. Oh, no.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is really loud. This item before you tonight is the proposal to continue for another year the city's taxi voucher program that we have with Catalina Transportation Services. Just to paraphrase what the staff report has, they are their proposal is to continue the service as is with no increases. I can tell you that the $96,000 that was approved last fiscal year, we're going to probably hit the mark perfectly between Bob Mesher, myself, and Connie Stewart at CTS. We carefully monitor where we are with that. It seems to have been working very well, the two the two books a month. And one of the things that we have had a couple hiccups on over the past, I would say, month or two, was the wheelchair accessible vehicle. And they have a public service permit as part of their old contract. They were required to have that wheelchair accessible taxi. There is no requirement now, so we asked them to put that in the proposal as a requirement. So the wheelchair accessible taxi is available during normal taxi business hours. So if you have an ADA passenger who needs that after the dial ride service has ended for the evening, they still have access during the taxi hours. They end at midnight, correct, Connie? So from 7:00 AM to midnight, 365 days a year, there is a wheelchair accessible vehicle.
And it is yours.
That is good.
It is theirs. And the public service permit will stay on that taxi. And they're willing to, you know, it's another vehicle in their fleet they they'll take care of. And I think they've done a great job. As you recall, we took the taxi book sales in-house for internal controls. And I the public seems to have figured it out pretty well. And Dudley and Christie do a fabulous job. And I would recommend that we budget it for the next fiscal year at the same fee. It is out of the general fund. It is not funded from Metro funds. So that's an important thing to note.
And Audra is actively pursuing gaining more Metro funds to try and replace a general fund with that. I know she's been working on that.
Yes, I have been.
Okay, I'll make a motion to renew the taxi voucher program operated by Catalina Transportation Service in an amount not to exceed $96,000 for fiscal year, 17,000.
I'll second.
Okay. Move to second. Comments? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Okay.
And then it's me again, Mayor and Council. The staff report before you is specifically to talk about Token Transit, which is a mobile app fare program. But I am going to take an opportunity during this really quick PowerPoint to also tell you some of the other things that are happening with the transit system so you can kind of see where we're going, what we've done. And I just thought it would be a nice way to roll it all together. So Token Transit is a mobile app to purchase bus fares. It's a cost effective way to add day, week, and month pass options for transit riders, which is something that the council had asked us to look into. The transit token fee is 10% of the fares collected, and they can generate reports based on the specific needs of our agency. If we want to get daily reports, weekly reports, monthly reports, they're able to generate those reports for us. And then when you see that I have a little video to show you, there's opportunities in there to create advertising space on the app, which would be a great revenue generation for our transit system. So this is what the app looks like. And if you bear with me, I'm going to show you how it works. If this works the way it's supposed to.
Buying a bus pass on Token Transit is really easy. Just tap by passes. The agency loads to where you are locally and select your rider type. And then you can select the fare type. The rider and fare types are completely customizable based off your agency. Confirm choice. Confirm and purchase. This will charge my credit card and give me a one-ride regular pass available for use. When I'm ready to board the bus, I can tap that regular one-ride because I want to start the timer. Confirm the use. It verifies I have a valid ticket. And here's the ticket that I showed to the driver. Today is an Orange Island Day. Tomorrow might be a Red Island Day, or whatever pictures and words the agency chooses for their tickets. Notice I have 29 minutes left on the pass. And after that 29 minutes, the pass will disappear and I'll have to buy another one-ride pass. If I go into by passes, it loads my defaults, and I can really easily buy another pass for a friend if I want to ride the bus with them. Notice I have an active pass and also a pass available for use.
So that is the very short demonstration on how the Token Transit works.
You got it.
There we go. So as part of the this proposed Token Transit, we would like to talk about revamping the fare structure. The system's been running for almost a year. And as you recall, we set the fare at a low $1 per person per ride to try and promote ridership. The average single ride bus fare in the greater LA area is $1.76. So we're proposing the changes as follows. $2 for a single fare. The single fare can be purchased on the Transit Token App or still with cash. A $5 day pass. $20 for a one-week pass and $50 for a monthly pass. Bob Mesher, along with Transportation Concepts, were in the call, the webinar where we discussed how this would look. We kind of we feel that it would probably increase our overall fare revenue just by the mere fact that people will probably want to save money, so they'll buy a day pass instead of a one-way fare.
And that, I guess, is proven in other communities to be the case?
Yes, yes.
Not just our assumption?
Correct. So I kind of went ahead of myself. The cash rider, the cash fares for single riders will remain, or you can buy them on the Token Transit. But if you want to use utilize the day, week, or month pass options, you'll have to download and use the Token Transit app. Creating a paperless pass program solves a lot of the concerns that staff, meaning me, struggled with when researching how to implement the pass program. Because it includes a lot of costs associated with it, printing, staff resources, managing it, and selling locations. It's a lot of bodies to do a pass system. The riders can download the app and be ready to use utilize their passes within minutes. It's very, very quick. And I did it myself on my phone, so I can tell you I'm not super savvy and it was not So now we're going to kind of jump out of the Token Transit piece just for a minute to tell you how maybe all of this will tie in together. Where we are right now, because of the council's proactive approach to transit, is that we've been working with the Swiftly team, our fantastic city mechanics in George Bahamondes, and the required GPS monitors are are all installed and sending signals on the buses. As an aside to this, there's a dashboard option that Avalon Transit can access, and they can see the buses on the routes. And it gives them the capability in dispatch to slow or speed up the buses, like you need to sit at the stop for two more minutes because you're ahead or behind. So they're super, super excited about how it's functioning and what it means for us. And it's really inexpensive. So what Swiftly does is then Swiftly takes that real-time data and it pushes So they're super, super excited about how it's functioning and what it means for us, and it's really inexpensive. So what Swiftly does is then Swiftly takes that real-time data and it pushes it out to a bunch of other transit app providers. Transit, the Transit app is the one that seems to be the best, easiest to use, and we would like to recommend that that's our preferred real-time app. And all of these agencies, all these companies work together and share information, which is just really exciting. So the next steps would be if you approve the Token Transit process, we will ask Swiftly, Transit, and Transit Token all to share the information, which they have already agreed to do, to offer the best product to the rider. And then we've also requested that they all work together to explore combining it all into one app, so that the user doesn't have to have an app for the pass and then an app to see where they are. In addition to the Transit app, transit users all over the world are very familiar with Google Transit and their Google Maps app, and I want you guys to know that we are up and live there as well. So these are screenshots I took today. And right now, it's on a 40-minute loop because we're only running one bus. So you can put in where you're at, where you want to go, where you're closest, and you can trip plan. And then it also tells you how much farther you have to walk. It's kind of hard to see, but it'll show you the end of the route. And then if you wanted to get all the way to the Wrigley Gardens, it'll show you how much walking distance there is. Next steps. Avalon Transit and city staff are being trained to update the Google Transit information so that when there's two buses en route, that real-time information is in Google Transit as well as on the Swiftly and Transit apps. Development of attractive and permanent bus stop signs. I've requested money in the budget for these. And we'll use the Token Transit and the Transit logo apps on the signs for information purposes. Press releases, visits to the Chamber of Commerce members, local businesses, service clubs, and presentations to the general Avalon public on how to use these apps. And I already have a couple of people that live in the Bird Park that are dying to be like the beta testers. One in particular is, I get a call from her every week, "Where are we?" And then the last step would be marketing, marketing, marketing to just push it out.
And you have updated the current signs, I see, with some temporary signs.
We're constantly updating them. We're getting feedback from people and...
I mean, they are, they are, I just, I saw them today, and so you have done that, and they're current.
And they're gonna actually be updated again because we go into the full-blown summer schedule on June 16th. And then, again, hopefully with the Token Transit and the fee schedule, the fare will change as well. And then, once all of this is done, which is kind of all coming together now, the bus stop signs, we envision that we'll have two sets of signs. One will be the winter, and one will be the summer, they'll be permanent. And then Public Works will, I'm gonna work with Jeffrey Hernandez to pick the right kind of sign that's easy to change out. So we'll have real, we won't have the freestanding signs anymore, they'll be, you know, permanent posts with signs. And Public Works has been great, getting stuff painted, moving benches, and, you know, just getting our bus stops a little bit more attractive and easy to see. And that is the end.
So that doesn't cost us anything?
No, well, we're gonna be raising our fares, so the 10%, right, the 10%, we're still ahead.
I guess I have a little bit of a concern with the new rates, and maybe it's just a single ride rate. We're a lot smaller than other cities, so I guess I'm concerned is I get on the bus, and I go up, and I do the route one time, and I see where the Botanical Garden is, I see kind of where we drop off there and where we just go to there, and I guess would I finally say, "Well, I've already been up that way once, I don't need to really go there again." So will I really, now I can realize that I can walk everywhere else? I'm just a little concerned.
Well, I think, I have thought this thought, and I think that the people that, the people that use the system all the time, like our schoolteachers and all those people, they're gonna be buying the passes. So they're gonna be seeing, they're gonna be seeing a savings even with the $2, even with the doubling, the increase, they still see a huge savings. The people that are gonna be impacted probably the most are the visitors, and I don't think a $2 bus ride is gonna prohibit them from getting on the bus. I really don't. I think that the people that ride it regularly will avail themselves of the passes. And that's why the pass schedule, the fee schedule, when we first looked at it, the monthly pass was a lot higher. And so now, I felt like 50 was a max. Because that way, if you're riding, you know, five days a week, as a schoolteacher, twice a day, you're seeing a pretty substantial savings.
And are those teachers going to and from on the bus, or are they just mainly going to?
It depends. They schedule it so that the bus is waiting for them at that endpoint, because it's such a tight squeeze from when school gets out to that 350 vote.
I mean, it's only 10 people or so there, 12 people, but...
Yeah.
Still, that's pretty, that's like a local commuter.
Yeah, that's like a half a bus load.
Right.
It's good.
So I just think that, you know, we've been working really hard, and it's all, it's all coming together, and it's gonna be exciting.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Do we have any, is there any kind of a problem with, let's see, the Holiday Inn or the Island Company buses getting, sharing the bus stops with us?
Not that I'm aware, I mean, well, okay, so if we want to get into the weeds a little bit, I think that the Holiday Inn Shuttle down there by the plaza needs to be reminded, and we've been talking to code about letting them know you can't just park there and, you know, go walk away. You have to be in the vehicle. So those are really kind of more code issues.
But you guys kind of, you all work together, so when they come in, they see a bus behind, they know the load up and take off.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then vice versa, okay.
I would just give George a great deal of credit for the relationships he's built in the community with the taxi company and the other people that are driving, because he's done a great job.
That pays dividends.
Yeah, it really does. And then on another note, that's completely aside, he's training local people here. They're sending them over to get their Class B licenses.
Oh, excellent.
So you're seeing a lot of young, new drivers in the buses, which is super exciting because it's a new career for them, and I think that they've done a great job of making themselves part of our community.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
I'd like to move to approve the proposed proposal submitted by Token Transit to provide mobile ticketing options for the Garibaldi public bus.
I second that.
Comments? Call for the vote.
All eyes.
Break time?
We've been here for three and a half hours.
Oh.
We got a couple more.
Okay, I guess we're taking a break, folks.
Five minutes, guys.
You wanted a break too?
No, I said power through it.
Oh, you said power through.
Power through, you're not gonna power through the next one.
You don't power through.
Oh, I don't know. Number 16, I think we'll power through pretty quick. But if we need a break, we need a break.
Yeah, mother nature.
Oh, sorry, Dan.
Well, we already submitted all of our...
We already powered through.
Powered through. On, we gonna power through it, or we gonna break? What are we gonna do?
I guess we went.
Dan's there.
Okay, let's just power through Dan.
I ask you, Dan's...
I will, I will power through. Can I get a minute and a half of the oral comments? You rushed into consent, I just had a couple of quick ones. Kickoff to the inflatable's day in the Bay this past Sunday was fantastic.
Thumbs up.
We had probably over 100 kids out. Thank you to Joe's Rent-A-Bolt. Hopefully, everybody made your baseball games on Sunday.
Yep, they did.
Heard some great scores there. But thank you to Joe's Rent-A-Bolt. We had kayaks out there, we had stand-up paddleboards out there, we had 100-plus kids out there. Staff was out there with beach games and just had a great, great time. Choice was out doing a barbecue, was a little fundraiser for their program. Community Planting Day Rotary is this Thursday and Friday if needed, but Thursday, we're meeting some Rotarians to start putting plants in place that are going to the grounds along the Mall and then through Front Street. And then at 12 o'clock, we've got probably 10 to 15 people scheduled to come through and start putting those in the ground. So that'll be this Thursday at noon, if you wanted to come out for that. Thank yous to Edison for that grant, that $5,000 grant to get this off the ground, and then certainly to Rotarians Go Hag and, is it Linda Salo?
Linda Salo?
Salo, they've been absolutely fabulous. Registering for all our summer programs, I won't go through those, but I just want to hit those couple of things there. Thank you. Polystyrene. Back view tonight with an ordinance in hand. At the last meeting, we came forth, and we took some comments and put that into the shape of an ordinance that is before you. The recommended action is the city council introduce and waive all further readings of an ordinance to prohibit the use of polystyrene products, the use of disposable food, service ware in the city of Avalon, and direct staff to return to the next scheduled city council meeting for adoption of said ordinance. I can get into the meats of it, you have the ordinance in front of you. I can get into the dates, you tell me how much of this you want.
I, well, I just want to say, I know that the city manager received a comment by someone in the community about why can we move that up and make this go a little bit quicker?
Yes, you did receive an email communication, yes.
There was, there was one comment in regard to that. We did have discussions on that. We'd looked at other ordinance, and six months tended to be what was the norm for that. We also chose the six-month in that getting stuff over town, from over town, and some of the stuff that's pre-printed, we wanted to be able, some of the vendors to be able to go through their pre-printed stocks and purchasing. So we want to make some accommodations there. They're already in the middle of their summer, it's a busy time. Hopefully, they can get rid of most of it and then start in fall to deal with preparing for the first of the year.
I totally agree, I think the six months is a, Dan Ray, one is a good...
In your packet, we've got a sample flyer or something that could go out in terms of notifying the public on what the program is. And I think, as we talked at the last meeting, this could be the start of many more opportunities for a greener city.
I'm in favor of starting at September 1st, but I'm just happy that it's happening. So I just want to say that most, there are very few establishments that have six-month supply worth of items. Generally, you're ordering, you know, a couple, two, three weeks in advance, but the pre-printed ones are an issue. I know Coney Island reached out to me, and I know Jack Tucci also has his pre-printed material, but that was really all that was out there that was pre-printed that I could find. And so with that, I'm hoping, if we can't move the actual ban to September, I'm hoping that we can move up discussions in July and August about other options. And I think you should reach out to further than just one particular company to, that, you know, maybe you could have some of the vendors that provide, there's several other vendors that provide, you know, food containers besides just one purveyor. So maybe if you could work to get everybody to come and showcase their products or whatnot, and if we could do that sooner rather than later, because generally speaking, in the summertime is when folks have money. And so perhaps people are buying more for, you know, helping to get through, you know, some of those winter months, so...
Yeah, we can pick up that timetable.
Okay. So I mean, I would be willing to say start the ban January 1st if we can move up all the education and get everybody on board, everybody's questions answered, so we don't get to this. I didn't know, I don't know about project, other products or anything like that.
But people are really busy in the summer too. They're really busy.
We've been busy for like four years now, year-round, so it's been, I mean, I see the point, but I also see that we, you know, we've been talking about it.
We will get notice out as soon as this gets approved, if it gets approved. And with that notice, we'll have some alternatives out there and start to get that information out so it's accessible. We're gonna call for a voluntary, you know, ban, you know, from day one, and hopefully, we're gonna start to get people move down that route.
No, that's great. And I know the chamber's right behind you and willing to help, so thank you.
And I think we'd like to thank the chamber also for reaching out to the business community in advance and asking if there were comments or questions regarding the proposed ordinance. I think we may have gotten one or two through that site, so Jim did do what was helpful in at least getting the information out.
And this is gonna go in chapter, I've got it here, gonna go in chapter six. Now, it'll be Title VI of your municipal code, which is Health and Safety, and it'll be Chapter 14, Right After Water Quality Control. And so when you see this ordinance, next time, it will have the actual numbers, but we're gonna keep the substance the exact same, so there's no substantive alterations to it.
And I think, he also brings up a point, we did leave blank the administrative fees. You know, did we want to see some additional administrative fees in there, or are we okay with...
With the offenses and things like that?
The offenses, correct.
Is that what you mean with all the offenses?
Apparently, some of the ordinance that have an administrative fee on top of that, is that correct, Scott?
We have administrative penalties, that is, just blank. We can, we have 30-day, 30-day written warning, $100 per fine or per violation. Third offense is 200, subsequent offense is 500.
Per offense, per offense.
For each, for each...
Offense per day, I mean, so...
No, for each violation.
Oh, for each violation.
I don't think they're gonna be knocking on the door every day and checking, hopefully.
Does this leave us, I mean, worst-case scenario, does this leave us with the right to revoke a business license if somebody is just not wanting to comply? Or do we need to specifically, I mean, I can't imagine if, I can't imagine people don't want to do this to better our environment here.
I would argue that a business license, if not complying with city codes, it arguably could be revoked. It's certainly something, as you said, council member, that was unlikely, very unlikely, but could it be? I mean, I think you could. You could revoke, we could revoke for not complying with city code or city ordinances, so...
We, you know, I was on the, kind of on the facility end at the city of Calabasas, and it was full compliance, you know, right off the bat.
Like I said, I think everybody wants to better the environment.
So I think you'll find that.
Most people want to do it, yeah.
And your municipal code already provides in the Business Code section that if they violate terms of the license, we can revoke it. One of the terms of the license, I believe, is compliance with all city laws. So it's already built into your regulatory.
It's not something we're looking for.
Okay. So with that, then I would make a motion to introduce and waive all further readings of an ordinance to prohibit the use of polystyrene products for the use of disposable food, service ware in the city of Avalon, and direct staff to return to the next scheduled city council meeting with the adoption of said ordinance.
I'll second that. Comments? Jim, any comments? Oh, and Bob has a comment.
I wasn't clear on the fees, what was the decision?
They're gonna keep him as is, and we're not gonna have administrative penalties, which are the possible revocation of a license.
But aren't we in the process of doing a study now?
Well, no, this has penalties though, you have to have, so it has penalties already in the passage.
Okay.
As opposed to a fee, it's a penalty.
Yeah.
Did you get your question answered, Bob?
And Scott, could you give me the code section you stated for the record? Title VI, Section 14.
Call for the vote.
All eyes.
Item 17.
Oh, item 17, sorry, I had dozed off, Madam Mayor, I apologize. You, the council, it is important for us as your staff to have an opportunity to hear, even in advance of a public hearing, when we're presenting a budget to you, to hear what issues you might have that you want us to consider as part of the new budget year. What it does by getting it as early as possible is that it gives us a chance to come up with cost information. If it's, you know, build this or start that service, we can cost it out. So when we come to you the next time or during the budget presentation, we will have information for you, rather than say, "Oh, we'll have to get back to you." So what I know, one council member, the mayor, her honor, she did submit a sheet to me and just said, "These are some things that I'm, I will ultimately share all of this with all of you, and I'll provide this information to staff to do some evaluation that might be needed." If you wish to do that tonight, you may. If you wish to do that tonight, you may. If you wish to submit something to me, please do in writing, and I'll make sure that that's part of our record. If you would like to just come in and chat with me about it, I'm available to do that too.
I know, I've given, I've had a couple of conversations with, with department directors, but the, the one that I haven't talked to yet is Bob, and I wanted to ask if we could get an update on the 10-year CIP program and maybe have some time to digest that.
Yeah, I'm working on that now, so.
Okay.
Hopefully by, as we get, by next Monday, I'll have that finished up.
It is, and I will mention, it is the job of the department directors at this point is to present in a preliminary budget what they seem to, what they believe is needed to operate their department. That then, information in, in its gross form will be presented to you, along with a recommendation to balance the budget, so that is their charge right now, is to provide what services they think are needed in their department, and then you'll, you'll see it all, and then to the extent that we have revenue to match expenditures, we'll bring a balanced budget to you.
So they'll bring, they'll bring us a priority list of what they feel is going to be best for their department, and then we actually?
Yeah, that is their job to do, that's their job, to do that and present that.
But we make the determination.
And you make the determination.
The final determination, but respectfully considering what, what their, what their wishes are, okay.
So you're not hacking anything off of those before that we get to?
No, because it's, well, first of all, the process next year is going to be much sooner. We're going to start sooner, we'll have, we'll have, because of the improvements to the finance system, we'll have data sooner, we'll have updates, we'll have monthly financial reports that compare expenditures to revenue in a department, and that is now in place with staffing and technology, and so we'll start a lot, a lot earlier. But, but I'm not, I'm not chopping off stuff at the preliminary stage, that isn't my job at this point, it is to present to you under the code, a balanced budget, but with full information about what departments are requesting. So they don't need to go around anyone to do that, it's their job to do it in this part of the process. That's what, it was worked very well with me and 35 other budgets, municipal budgets that I presented.
Right.
Beautiful.
And, and we, we probably don't suffer from that, I remember when I was community services director, and you get towards the end of the year, and you go, oh shit, man, we got some money left over, and we just kind of went crazy trying to spend it at the last minute, whether we needed it or not.
Yeah, we don't.
That would be nice.
They don't know if they have money left over.
Yeah, we don't, no, we don't know.
Because they don't have the?
Well, yeah, what, what, we will also, the director and I have talked about, and he's mentioned earlier, in earlier presentations, is that we'll also talk to you about what, to present some ideas to you about safe reserves in the various funds, from the enterprise funds to the general fund, so that in the event that there was a revenue shortfall, you could, you would, it would not reduce the level of service that you're providing. And I actually think from what I've seen of the directors that we've been meeting recently, just, I've been listening in and asking questions, that they're, they're a pretty conservative, and still, they're a pretty conservative group who are focused on needs, needs first, and, and I'm pretty impressed with what I'm seeing so far.
And so, so starting July 1, there will be financials so we can move forward after July 1, by then, because we're, you know, with the new fiscal year, they'll, you think, Bob, we'll be able to move forward then?
As far as having a budget adopted by July 1?
No, quarter, monthly, monthly reports that they can, they can be responsible for their own budgets, and, and we'll know what's going on going forward, because it is nice to look at, instead of a lump number, that's all we see, to see department spending as well, so that, you think by July 1, we'll have that new system in place?
Yes, I can, I can commit to that.
I mean, isn't that what we're?
One of the goals that we had before was to have the finance department give each of the departments their sort of budget versus actual, where they were, where their spending was, so that the department heads could take ownership over what they're spending, if they're going over. We've also asked to kind of know, we have so many unbudgeted items that we approve throughout the year, that it's hard to know where, where we really are based on what we said our budget was going to be, and then with all these overages, where we are, and so it'd be nice if the department directors could help with that a little bit in monitoring their own spending and.
And just not spending, but income, too.
But income, too, you're right, new, new revenue sources and.
Shortfalls.
Yeah, agreed.
And the venue that we can do that is that Open Gov software that was, was approved earlier this evening, the Open Gov software, the software we're currently using, if you go on our website, you can see the actual versus, versus the budget for the mid-year results, we're getting ready to update that through March, but then also there's the other component of that that we haven't been using yet, which is more detailed for internal use, where they can drill down into the individual expenditures, and that's, that's what we're planning on doing.
No, that's, that's imperative, I mean, that's how it used to be, and so I was responsible for my own budget, you know, and then if I had to come and beg, if I needed to transfer money from one point to the other, it was in, within my budget, I couldn't steal any from the harbor or from the fire department, you know, so it was just accountability by department heads.
And, and that is exactly what the goals, I think of all of us, are, is to, is to do that, to give them the information they need on a monthly basis to manage their operation, and that, that is the goal that, that they're actively, finance is actively working toward, and that is the goal that you have, and that's my goal, and.
Yeah, cool. Okay, so back to that, what do you?
We don't need approval or anything.
No, but, what is the deadline that you want either talk or get a list from?
Right, as soon as possible, as soon as possible, so we can start working, I noticed that, and I, and I do thank you, Mayor, for your submittal, there's, and she has a number, and I'll share all these with all of you, but she has a number of things that we can start looking at, what those, some of them are clear, you know, if you spend $5,000, that's $5,000, but there's some things that we might have to get, get more information on, so as soon as you can get that to, to myself and to the finance director, the sooner we can get answers to those questions.
And, and again, just because I make recommendations, you can all scratch, scrap my step, too.
Yeah, we're just going to show you what the implications are.
You know that?
We're not saying it's a fair.
That's the managerial privilege, I think, that I get, kind of like Don Kenobi, don't I get a little discretionary fund?
No, you can budget, you have to budget that.
I can budget my salary.
Well, well, it's funny, actually, you should, you should say that, but state law talks about that in relationship to directly elected members.
All right, thank you, okay. Here we go, public hearing, let's open the public hearing.
Item number 18.
But we don't open the public hearing yet, we just get the report and then open the hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good evening, the, this item is the public hearing to consider the adoption of the fiscal year 1718 miscellaneous fee schedule. The city charges fees for miscellaneous services, facilities and activities, and these fees are associated with all city services and programs, such as those provided by recreation, planning and building, administration, law enforcement, harbor, cemetery, finance, public works, and the fire department, that confer a benefit, grant a privilege, perform regulatory duties and enforce laws, or are a condition of development. And we've reviewed the fee schedule for, from the prior year, and we made some updates. Included in the, in the staff memo was a, a list of what the significant changes were, the first section talked about what was relabeled, there was a section of five items where there were some fee decreases, there were some more items that were fee increases, and a few deletions that were no longer applicable, and then some additional fees, there was 15 additional fees on the second page of that list. And I'm avail, some of the significant changes, one was the $500 dog licensing fee for unneutered dogs, so that's something that the city council should look closely at, make sure that that's what we can do, and.
And we're going to be doing that via an, a separate ordinance also, because we're going to have to clean up the, the, yeah, it's going to be made applicable to all dogs, they're going to be spayed, spayed or neutered, and then, and then a penalty, if you don't do that, will be the $500 penalty, it's a fine.
I was actually going to ask if, if we could, I know you can't pull an item off the fee schedule, but that one, I know this has to come back again, and I've, I've reached out to Dr. Denny, and he was a little, he was, obviously had other things going on and emergencies and things, so I would like to have a conversation, and, and then I'd like to reach out to another one or two other professionals to ask some questions about that, so if we're, we're looking at this tonight, but we can still make a change if need be?
Well, you can, you can pull an item off the fee schedule, but in order for it, for it to be a penalty, $500, you got to do it via ordinance, so that's coming.
Okay.
Karen?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I looked on this list, and I can't find my beach wedding fee. Do we not, we talked about this last year, because there's lots of weddings that take place on our beach, and it's a public beach, and commercial people are taking the public use away from the public while this wedding takes place, and I think it's reasonable for us to charge a fee.
Yeah, we did up in Tahoe around the lake, yeah, we had a fee.
Are we charging for that?
Well, we talked about it last year.
That'll be a use of public property which we can charge for.
I know, it doesn't affect me, but I remember years ago, there was discussion about Buena Vista Point when Mr. Winslow was on the council, and it was, okay, so now you're going to charge there, and there are some expectations. It's going to be clean, if I'm paying, you know, if somebody's paying for it, it's got to be clean, there can't be garbage, there can't be dog poop, okay, perhaps, or for 25 bucks, you get dog poop, whatever. So the same thing with the beach, if they're charging a fee, whatever, and again, it's something I won't vote on, and I really don't care which way it goes, because that's just going to be passed on to the consumer. However, so now you're going to guarantee them a spot, so that I don't have to go, excuse me, they're going to be a wedding here, would you, and nobody minds, but would you mind scooting over just a little bit?
But we do do that when we issue permits for public, or for city property, like a front street or.
All right, so who are you going to give that to, so Dan's got to go down now, because we're having, you know?
Depends who gets the money. Dan gets the money, he's going to take it out.
And then there's the people who just show up with their own little minister sometimes, and they just walk on the beach, so you're going to have to go, excuse me, or you just let those pass, I don't know, but just think of the, y'all can work out whatever, but.
My, my major concern is when you set up 40 chairs on the beach.
Oh, I get that, I get, I only have 10, so I don't have a problem.
Maybe we started at eight.
No, but I know what you mean.
I just, I mean, I think it's, it's a commercial activity taking place on city property, aliens don't have insurance, so some of the trips and falls, you know, we're correct?
Yeah.
And so this is just trying to take care of, in the permit process, and that when people use public property, they just don't use it willy-nilly, they know that there's rules, and we can set the rules. I know, I've been to weddings on state beaches, and they coordinate off, they charge big bucks, state beaches, but this is.
And I've seen them on state beaches, too, down, and they don't do anything, but they have you do a permit, they get the money, and then you go down there, and there's 1,000 people at the beach, and they're going, hey, but I paid for this spot.
There's the, actually, the state beach I went to, they roped it off, roped it off, private event.
So because of the noticing requirements, we can't add fees to the schedule?
No, and you're more than welcome to, y'all are more than welcome to do what you need to do.
If I could mention, there is a wedding reservation fee that we do have at the very end of the fee schedule.
Really?
What does that mean?
Really?
You were right there, didn't you see?
After the other parks, $47.
Where?
I'm sorry?
Section?
It is the section that has the Field of Dreams, Joe Machado Field, Trima Park.
What are you calling a wedding?
It's called Wedding Reservations, $47.
Where?
Have we, has the city collected on that?
Page 12. Did you, no, you just created this, right?
No, this was an existing fee.
Page 12.
Was that for, that was probably for Wrigley Plaza Stage?
Right above section 11. Is it in Exhibit A, is it in?
No, it's on page 12.
Why do I have to?
It's on page 12, miscellaneous fee services, it just says weddings, reservations, 47.
Has anybody, has anybody ever?
So that's anywhere on city property.
Sandy, there's two fee schedules, the first one, 1670, it's in the second one.
Has anybody ever paid for that?
No.
You know?
Never even heard of it.
I haven't researched that, so I don't know.
Code Enforcement's coming to get you.
Just curious.
Well, that'll be an interesting, good luck, Code.
It's one of those Avalon things.
Code has a lot on its plate, yes, yes, ma'am.
Hey, Bob, I noticed on some of these, we're not done kicking that horse, we're not done with that horse.
So does it, does that encompass the beach weddings only?
I don't think $47 makes a whole bunch of sense.
If you walk, okay, you walk onto the beach with the people and you do a wedding for 10 minutes, 15 minutes, max.
That's a good thing, I mean, that's, that's.
But they put the chairs up in a few hours.
But that's a whole different thing.
And they get the band and the photographer and all this kind of stuff.
And that's the other thing, is typically that's not done in the middle of summer, that's done on the off season, because, well, not as much as you think. However, Bob, what do you think? And how, well, I know, before you bring this back and change this, if this is just kind of like the neuter thing, figure out a process, because just to save $47 and no process makes no sense.
Well, I would question whether raising the rate, if, if staff right, right now, we're not recalling anyone that, that's used the wedding, that's used the wedding fee in the past, raising the rate's not going to generate any more revenue.
That's good.
I think, I think we need to, if, if we want to promote weddings, then we'd have to have some kind of marketing program or something like that, and that would justify increasing the rate, too, if we were going to market it.
What's your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think it was a desire of the council to do something like this, that we identify one or two spots on the beaches that we hold weddings, and that we can police that a little better. If it's just a down and dirty get-in, and it's $47, with a minister and a couple of people, you start bringing out, you know, the chairs and the gazebo, you know, it's another fee, and it's, you know, it's, it's scheduled, but it's, it's, yeah, it's going to be staffing, too, intensive.
So this is a new fee?
No, this fee has been on the books, it's just, we haven't been, we haven't been charging it, yeah, it just hasn't been done.
Okay.
Like, right, I mean, if you could just do a wedding anywhere on the beach, it's going to be tough to police, I mean.
Well, and I guess the other thing is, is then, let's say, somebody comes in today and says, I want to get married tomorrow morning, I mean, because there are all these last-minute weddings, yeah, and those are, those are planned, however, they come in on Sunday, and they go, oh, I'm going to come over on Saturday, I want to get married on Sunday, city hall is closed, we should just know to have $47 in our pocket, so when Code comes, we can just give them $47, right?
And a receipt.
Or something.
Goes to finance.
If you get married with dogs, that's an extra penalty.
Especially not, and neutered dogs. Go ahead, Jim, Luke, John.
Just a thought, that I know we've recently moved some of the fees that we collect on your behalf back to the city, but maybe this is something that on those weekend hours could be paid at the visitor's center, if that would help, if it's that spontaneous, I don't know. We do have spontaneous wedding planning that goes on in the visitor's center at a surprising frequency, so, don't know, just throwing that out.
Well, and I guess the thing is, and what are they, okay, what are they getting, are they guaranteed, I guess my question is, are they guaranteed a space on the beach? If you've paid money?
Maybe for, maybe not.
They're guaranteed a space on the beach when they don't pay the money?
I don't think, since we, since I don't think we even realized that there was this fee, I don't think, I don't think it's been enforced, and I don't think there's any.
No, but moving forward.
Moving forward, yes.
Can we send it back to staff to flesh that out a little bit?
I think Dan had a couple of really good ideas right there.
Yeah. No, I, I.
Well, I think with any, any of these fees, if we want to come back throughout any time of the year, we can bring it to you and amend it throughout the year, we could approve it with the $47 for the wedding, get direct staff to investigate that more with the chamber, and, and see if we can come up with a better fee structure and a method to make that work, is perhaps what we need to do there. Same thing with the dog, unneuter dog fee, will, my recommendation would be to put it back to what it was before, which I think was $56. my recommendation would be to put it back to what it was before, which I think was $56, keep it unchanged in tonight's proposal, and then, uh, city attorney would come back with a proposal later on, that, for the city council to consider for the, for a larger fee.
And that, that's a good recommendation.
A, a larger fee for...
It'll be $500 if it's not, it's going to be a penalty.
If it's not.
It's going to be a penalty.
Yeah, but what, is 56 just to get it done?
It's current.
That's what it currently is.
Oh, that's what it currently is, okay, yeah.
So what about the cost?
Is that a license that you get? That's how much the license is. How much is it to actually get the, do you know how much it is to get the, the procedure done on the dog?
Hundreds of dollars.
It's about 500 here.
Oh, really? What if somebody can't afford that? You think we could work with them?
That's why we're going to bring this back with an ordinance and a sincere discussion of the council, as to how you want to do it.
Okay, good, yeah.
Doctor Danny, yeah.
Yeah, we got to help people out with this.
He's got a lot of good information on that. Doctor Denny has that.
But there's also members of the community that are reaching out now with a fair argument that if I am a responsible owner, and I, I am paying for an animal, and I, you know, am going to register that animal, then I shouldn't be, um, I shouldn't be reprimanded for all the bad owners in town, that, you know, and that there is some concern that, you know, spaying, neutering does alter an animal. So I just, I personally want more information, because I don't feel like I fully understand it, so.
I think there's exceptions for breeding, um, species, right, or some breeders, or, okay.
So, okay, so when you, these, these fees, okay, so, you know, we can, you can all explain it. So, these kind of fees, is, there's, isn't anything in here about the cost it takes us to do it?
Yeah, and that's an analysis that, that, that in order to impose new fees or different fees, we have to do an analysis of what the actual cost to provide the service is. The city attorney has said that when you assess penalties for non-compliance with one thing or the other, that's different, but any fee is based on our cost to provide the service. Now, as the city attorney also pointed out, is when there's use of city property, then that kicks into another, there's some kind of market analysis, but, but as far as if it, we have to set up the, some event, and there was a, we would, we couldn't base a fee on just what we need to run the, the, the community services department, we'd have to say, this is our cost, our personnel, our material, and so on.
But, but, didn't we approve some study for this?
Okay, no. We, those were, so, those are the sewer, saltwater...
Just everything else.
These are fees that were established while, a long time ago, based upon the estimated cost of the city services, and each year, we just bring these back to you, and we're, and we're not doing a CPI this year, because it's been so low.
But do you do, is that something we want to do? Or do you think, well, I make a few extra?
I think that's something that's, we could do internally with staff, and, and have someone go through, there, there's quite a number of, of fees here, so it would take a while, but I think it would take internal staff to examine it, because it's going to take internal staff time anyway, because they're familiar with how much time it takes to provide that service. And, yes, that's something that we can put on our to-do list. I, I would estimate that once we started, it would take a couple of months to complete.
Okay. Yeah, because sometimes I just, some things just don't seem like a lot of...
Well, I think the theory, Mayor, is, the theory is that when we're doing, when we are doing, um, work for private parties, or we're doing, work for private parties, that the other taxpayer should not be bearing that burden of, of, of that work that we are doing. And that, and in fact, state law, through the state constitution amendment passed several years ago, I think it was called Proposition 1, it talked about the, the requirement, really, that cities should look at their actual costs. Now, what's in the end actually you set as a cost, once you know it, you can make a determination that, well, there's some public benefit, and maybe it should be a little lower, but, but that analysis is important, um, so that, so that the other person's not paying for something that's only one person's getting.
Hey, Bob, I just got a question on the fire department plan checks, and sprinkler checks, and stuff like that. The, uh, the fire department doesn't do the plan checks, they send them out, like, I'm, I'm assuming I talked to Chief Craig today about it, and I was wondering, um, we don't see any part of that money in any form or way of, of a plan check, if we send them out to another company to do them?
I, I'm not familiar...
So, we got, you have a plan check, it says, are we charged for plan checks? So we don't have anybody in the fire department that does that, so we send them out to another company, but that just, all that money just goes to that company for a plan check? Or, it says $495 for plan?
I'm not familiar with the details enough to be able to answer that.
What, what some cities do is, is that when you have outside plan check purveyors, is they, that the person for that plan check pays at least what the cost is, because let, let's say it's $700, but our fee schedule says $400, they pay at least that, and in some cities I've worked in, they actually charge a, a, a little extra, that's returned to the, to the city as kind of an administrative handling fee, so that's, I think Chief's nodding, yes.
If you see that on several of the fees, there's a plus 20% cost, or plus 10% cost to cover the basic cost of providing the services, plus in any administrative overhead.
But, but, but the actual plan check fee should be whatever the cost to provide, if it's Vons, for example, that's a different kind of plan check than it would be for a single-family room addition on a single-family unit, so as long as we have that ability in our, in our structure to charge that, that actual cost for those larger, more complicated projects, rather than the less one, which is, you know, some standard $415.
So that's not happening then?
Well, we're adding that. One, one of the fees we've added...
Is profession, legal and professional fees.
Professional and, and legal, and this came up because we had some matters where we were looking at our fee, and it was like, okay, this is costing some, some time, but it's not strictly a SEQA thing, so we added the fee there, so that when someone comes in and, and we're doing work for the city because of a development or something coming in, the city doesn't pay for that.
We get some out of it.
Yes.
Okay, that was just my other question.
Good job on your recreation detail. That's very nice.
But, can you give some, um, some understanding on the fee decreases for all the community services department fee decreases?
I have the list here.
So are you looking at any of the specific ones?
Items 1 through 5 under fee decreases at community services.
Um, 1 through 5. So we have based Day Camp weekly fee. This was put to us just a few weeks ago, as we were looking at taking on the Day Camp program. I took the exact cost it was going to take to put staff in there, at the hourly rate that we're putting staff in there, with some program costs on top of that, and that's what we came up with, the $65. That number actually was a number, I guess it was floated around a few years ago when it was used, and they happen to be the same numbers, so we, we kind of ran with that. We also took into consideration that, you know, we're going up against a, a program the last few years that costs zero, and we just want to be able to provide a service and get kids into that program. So it's a weekly cost, it's the day cost, so the same thing there. Park rentals from 47 to 25, we flirted with this at another facility, that, you know, if we charge too much for these things, the people are going to continue to just do what they'll do, and they'll just show up on these things, and 6 o'clock in the morning, 4 o'clock in the morning, and save it, and it gets to be, you know, two people are going head-to-head on the same date, and people go to fisticuss, because they're, they're all buying for the same, you know, same opportunity. We reduced it just to make an nominal fee for $25. We've been using it across the street, it's working out really well. We're keeping the park clean on a daily basis, you know, with some time to get a sign up there, and clean up a little bit thereafter on a bigger party, so that's what we did with the, the park rentals. Swimming lessons, again, I took the, the cost that was run, the instructors out there, and some program costs, and, you know, same with flag football. Flag football, what we did for adult flag football, is we just put it in line with what we're doing for youth ba, or adult basketball, and our adult volleyball program, so we just kept those in line at $30.
Perfect.
So that was the, the five there.
That's the least expensive recreation in the whole state of California.
Yes. And then the festival booth, $35 nonprofit and $50 profit currently is per quote. Does that, does that mean, like, art festivals, or, I wasn't clear on that?
Spring Fest?
Spring Fest, Fall Fest.
That was the, the Fall Festival and the Spring Festival charges that we had, the two times a year.
So it's 35 for nonprofit, for example, $35 per?
And then 50 for profit, correct.
Okay.
So I'm, I have a little, like, that 50, to me, is very inexpensive.
Is very what?
Very inexpensive, because that is a, that is a private business, big time.
I don't understand what you mean.
If I'm making the, if I'm making the waraches, and I'm, I'm making, now... I, I think that's really, there's a, there's a, I think, big discrepancy between the 35 and the 50. I, I think 50 is very inexpensive.
My only complaint is that they didn't have bacon-wrapped hot dogs last time.
So, I don't know, that, that's just me, because, I mean, that's, you know, anyway, that's just me, and I don't know if you would want to increase the rate at all.
Oh, sorry, so are you saying, like, hypothetically, the, like, on Spring Fest would be a $35 booth, but the Art Festival would be a $50 booth?
No, I'm saying, the, the, the nonprofit would pay 35, but Annie's, Annie's bacon-wrapped hot dogs would pay more.
Yeah, I think she's saying that some of the booths make a lot of money for profit.
They make a lot, a lot of money, for their personal profit and not for a nonprofit.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I see what you're saying.
But it does add to the, to the festival, and everybody...
I don't think they're going anywhere. I don't eat 60 bucks.
I never eat like that.
I'll use an example, if I can.
You can make it 100, and they would do it.
They still do it. If you made it 100, they'd still do it.
Yeah.
And I, I'm, you know, it's just my first pass at this, but Sweet Rosie that does the sand abs, I talked to her afterwards, it's Rosie, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She does the sand abs, and, you know, it's a family get-together, they're doing this thing for a couple of days before, and, you know, they're $10 a plate, it costs her $50 to do it. She says, we're breaking even doing this. I mean, they're not making a ton of money, but she could be...
Sun caught the fish, the fish was free.
Well, it's still delicious. How else are we going to get such a delicious, absolutely wonderful. It's good.
No, I appreciate your comment, Dan.
I liked it, I liked the soft touch on, on, on the people.
Okay, if you want to keep it there, I was just saying.
So what do we, do we, what do, we open up the public hearing now?
Right.
For any of the, one member of the public audience?
Okay. Like, to open the public hearing for comment.
Oh, good. Not so much a, a comment as perhaps a question, as I'm going through it. I feel like I heard in a planning commission meeting at some point over the year, the possibility of introducing an annual inspection for the short-term rentals, and if so, is there a fee associated with that? And I don't, I'm just, in my quick look, I wasn't pulling that up.
Vacation rental owners and the, and the permits. Oh, we have talked about that.
The transient rental permits.
Transient rent, okay.
It wasn't inspection, though.
Okay.
What is it?
So I'm, I'm pointing to the list of changes, and the very last one was plans, uh, planning, transient rental, rental permits, and it would include four components, would be a conditional use permit, SEQA, coastal development permit, and a 45-day notice, but it wasn't for inspection, as, as Jim was talking about.
If you wish to insure, to your, back to your, council members, if you wish that you have vacation rentals inspected on an annual basis, then that would, if that's your, or every other year, or whatever the, the term is, you could direct us to do that, then we'd have to determine what that cost is to do that inspection, and we could bring that back to you.
I mean, I, I, go ahead, Bob.
I, I think that we, I recall talking about that about a year ago or so, and there was concern over legality and, and privacy issues, because a lot of these are personal homes.
Yeah, it's actually done in other cities.
Who's responsible, yeah.
Hotels have to have annual inspections.
Actually, I believe the municipal code, um...
Yeah, the fire department.
You want me to look at this, but I think there's a requirement in municipal code already for an annual inspection.
Yeah, I think there is in there.
And I know it's annual or every three years. I can look at it if you want.
If that be the case, then...
But then, again, it was all about legality, who inspected it last, who's responsible for doing that. That was a big thing back in the day, we're in the fire department, I think I've done a couple of those, actually.
And it's a condition of approval to the thing, so it's just a matter of giving the appropriate notice, and not sneaking in, because there was a case that was in the newspaper today about a landlord that was sneaking in at all hours of the day to spy on his tenants.
So there's a couple of components to that. There's the fire, there's the, the health, there's the electrical, right, plumbing, I mean, what, what are building and, building and construction?
I understand the fire department on, on commercial properties does annual, you do annual inspections.
You're talking about personnel, you're talking about personnel, you're talking about time, you're talking about a lot of time, you're talking about making arrangements to get there, is, it was a lot, we've done, we went through this.
How would that work, Mike?
Chief, Fred?
Chief.
Chris, chief, I'm sorry.
The, what we talked about last time when this got kicked around was the issue, a lot of times where there's a CUP, but somebody is living there, and it's their private residence, but they're maintaining the CUP, so we don't have the, the legal authority to go in and inspect a private residence, but what we did is we took a model from another, another city, where we, and we generated this self-inspection form, and the spirit of it was to put some of the onus back onto the individual property owner, so that they can not only take a look at their property every time their cleaning staff is going through, and things like that, rather than once a year when we're doing it. So it was kind of a kill the, kill two birds with one stone. We were able to get, if that happens, some fire safety inspections, get it done a little more often, but we don't have this huge burden that gets put on us to try to get somebody inside all these structures once a year.
And it's, it's actually, it's, it's 180 days after someone gets a permit, there's to be an inspection, and then it's every three years, you're supposed to inspect these.
And what brought that up for discussion was when the fire suppression systems were put in, once you check them, they don't go back and get re-inspected again like you do with a commercial. That was one of the big items, so, you know, people turn them off, they could do this and that, and we approved them to go in, but there was no follow-up for residential, not commercial. That was a problem. They got it retired when I did.
Yeah. No, and we've discussed it before, I'm not as concerned with vacation rentals, because they wouldn't get rented if they were craps, for the most part. I think that for the most part, the vacation people do a good job. However, I'm concerned about the derelict housing that our residents have to live in, and I think we need, and there are people from the mainland that do it, and I know I talked to the chief about it before, and it, but I would like to see the people that are, that are renting on a year-round basis, when they come in at some point, to have those houses inspected, because they are living without heat, without proper kitchens, uh, broken windows, da-da-da-da-da, and there's, I know there's all the fear of retaliation, and there's all that other stuff, but that's where I think our problem is, is in the way some of our folks have to live.
Well, I did speak to the fire chief about whether or not we're doing annual commercial inspections, and, and he assures me that they are, and residential, where you have multi-family units. The question is, we also respond as a city, and we have recently on some issues, to individual complaints. If, for example, there's a safety problem because the heater, you know, I was, I was in a community where, where it was an improper heating system, and it killed two farmworkers, became a major investigation on, on how, well, how did that happen? It was outside the city limits. So, but, so if, if so, on a complaint basis, it can, it can, we can respond, and we have responded, where, for example, there's an existing, I won't name on what street, there's an existing residential unit, it's a, it's essentially empty, but where people are saying that it's a fire hazard, and it's probably a safety hazard, and, and I know when I brought that to the attention of the fire chief, he's inspecting, and building inspection will go in, will get the proper permissions to do what we're doing, but, so we respond also on that basis.
No, I totally get that, but the people that are afraid of complaining because of retaliation... retaliation, that is my concern.
And, and that's where the advantage of having some kind of routine or regular that doesn't depend on someone to squeal, or not squeal, that's a terrible term, to, to inform, to, to, to inform, because in the end, it's in all of our, our interests that people who live in units should be safe, and they should, and, and I see your point, so that's the, that's the other argument.
And so maybe at some point, we could look at that, again, it doesn't have to be done locally, 'cause that, but if there are outside agencies that come in, and whatever that fee is, that's what they charge, and, and it's done, and...
Well, in fact, when you sell, we just are selling a, a, a property, hopefully someone will buy one here, um, but, uh, and, and we had to have an inspection done, we had to have contract with a private firm, the firm comes in, it does the inspection, they give you a book report of, you know, of, of, so, if you, to the extent you want us to look at that, we can certainly look at those options, uh, if you wanna bring in private, the, the property, the owner, though, that bears that, would be, that would be their responsibility to pay for.
Okay. All right, are there other, any further comment? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Oh, so now we need a motion.
Yes.
Uh, I, let's see, I will make a motion to receive all public comment and adopt the resolution setting the fees for services, facilities, and activities for fiscal year 2017-18, uh, with a discussion of the dog and cat neutering to come back at another time, and...
And the weddings.
And the weddings to be fleshed out a little bit more.